I call the second session of the annual town meeting to order. I'm Joanne Berry, town moderator, and my eyesight isn't good enough to know if we have a lot of new folks in the audience. How many people were here last night? Okay? And how many people weren't here last night but are here tonight? Yay! Thanks for coming, for both. Thanks for returning if you were here last night, and thanks for joining us if you were not here. I'll just point out in the lonely gym that there are plenty of seats over here in the auditorium should people wish to come over. Tonight, we'll begin with Article 41. We did a lot of good work last night, and we'll continue tonight. We have seventeen articles to discuss and vote. Your willingness to be concise and not repeat what others have said will be much appreciated. We will continue with the pro and con mics. Pro is over on this side, con on this side. If you have a question, you can go to either, and if you are unable to stand at the mic, we do have the handheld mic right there in the middle, so just let him know, and he'll come over to you. And I'll try to see him as well. So, when I recognize you, please state your name and street before making your comment or asking your question. Please don't say how long you've lived in town. Every member of this meeting and their vote has equal value regardless of length of residence. Keep in mind that you are officially speaking to me, the moderator, though, of course, your comments are and questions are for the benefit of everyone. This is designed to keep the temperature down and keep the meeting flowing or moderated. If you have questions, I will recognize the person most appropriate to answer. If you have multiple questions, you still need to be recognized to continue. Discussion between person on the floor and person up here is not part of the process. You will have two minutes to speak, not including the response to the question. When we get to the non-binding resolution, speakers will be limited to one minute. The moderator will accept a motion to cut off debate or move the previous question once there has been sufficient debate to inform the town meeting members of the pros and cons of the motion. You may not make a statement then move the question; you may only move the question. Moving the previous question requires a second, is non-debatable, and requires two-thirds majority to pass. On the other hand, if I see that people are ready to vote, I may call for the vote without having a motion to move the previous question. There was a little confusion on that last night. It's not required. And especially if debate has expired, then we'll just go to the vote. We'll vote by voice and clickers as needed. So if you weren't here last night, I'll just let you know that we'll have instructions when it's time to use the clickers. I'll say that the IT folks have to get ready, and then you'll be told when to turn on the clicker with the orange button and sync up, and there'll be directions on the screen. So, no need to turn it on until it is time to vote. And if you are having any trouble, be sure to raise your hand, and the tellers will bring you a replacement. All right. That brings us to our first article for the evening, number forty-one, which is a citizen petition. "A Men Town Charter: Elected Planning Board Members Does Require Two-Thirds to Vote -- Two-Thirds to Pass." Ms. Friedrichs moves that the town amend the town charter as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Friedrichs, to your article.
Thank you. Sorry, it says fifty-two because they -- we changed the order. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about elected planning board. So I hit this, I guess. Oh, there we go. If this passes, the next step would be a ballot vote. So if this passes, there'll be a year-long period by which to construct the ballot language, and so we can all discuss and come up with language. And then if the ballot vote passes, then a transition would take place to elected planning "The study by the town of Ipswich summarized what planning boards around the state expect to do." They interviewed like thirty planning boards. "Study resources and needs, particularly conditions affecting public welfare and safety related to development. Follow the master plan with special attention to land use and ensure proper housing. oversee special permits to ensure they meet the goals of the planning board," excuse me, "of the master plan. Propose changes to the town's zoning bylaw. In addition, planning boards are supposed to, in effect, plan. State law calls for planning boards to make careful studies and, when necessary, prepare plans for the resources, possibilities, and needs of the city or town. A planning board is supposed to update the plant master plan. It is currently over ten years old in Acton, and it takes years to create one. In the existing plan's executive summary, the first priority list is listed as preserving rural and historic characters of the town, and it calls for Acton to maximize open space and minimize developed land. The Acton Climate Emergency Declaration calls for Acton to protect open spaces because of their ability to draw out carbon out of the atmosphere. An elected planning board will serve the people of Acton better by increasing the diversity of opinions, increasing the pool of expertise, and making it directly accountable to the voters. In effect, will increase effectiveness, transparency, and diversity. Although difficult to attract volunteers for any board or committee, based on our research, we believe that removing and appointing authority will attract more diverse candidates. No longer would a person be carefully chosen by a small number of people. In Ipswich study, the twenty-two towns that responded, over seventy-five percent had elected planning boards. It indicated that none of the towns had an elected planning board vacancy go unfulfilled. It's imperative to attract board members with backgrounds in planning, architecture, engineering, zoning, and/or law. Acton has a hard time getting volunteers to go through the appointment process successfully. Many volunteers who get through the process have very little or no professional land-use technical skills. One official who responded to the Ipswich study said, "When a board is appointed by selectmen, they lose their independence. Maintaining independence is especially important when construction projects impact neighbors or people that are concerned about the environment or traffic, et cetera, et cetera. We believe that an elected planning board will be more proactive in using its authority to reduce the negative impacts of new construction." These are the types of things that the planning board could be using local law to do: reducing the amount of land destroyed, minimizing the burden on town infrastructure, ensuring environmental justice and affordability, reducing the carbon impact of new building, protecting water, biodiversity, historic and archaeological relics, in effect, protecting the built and natural environment. Acton currently loses forty to fifty acres a year, some years much, much more, while housing and security increases. In summary, what does an elected planning board offer? More diversity, more accountability, new ideas, and expertise. During the election phase, we get to learn about candidate's background and views on key issues before they get on the planning board. This is not a radical idea. Seventy percent of Massachusetts towns have elected planning boards. We hope you'll vote yes to advance Acton toward an elected planning board. Again, if this passes, there'll be a ballot vote, and there'll be a year, almost a year, for us to decide how we'll vote at the ballot and to have plenty of time to craft the ballot vote to meet community needs, like if there's any requirements to be able to -- professional skills or accreditations. I vote -- I urge you to vote yes today to advance toward an elected planning board. Thank you.
Thank you. What is the Select Board's recommendation?
The Select Board was attracted to many of the goals listed here but was very split on the notion of -- on the question of whether electing a planning board would help achieve those goals. We agreed to make no recommendation, leaving this up to the will of the voters. You will hear the various pros and cons during the discussion. If any of us thinks an important point is being missed, we may speak as individuals on this issue during the debate.
Thank you. The Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee believes that being an elected official is no guarantee of confidence over an appointed -- an appointed role. And even though the speaker made some valid points with some interesting arguments, I'm sort of brought to our attention that really the planning department and the planning board probably could use some rethinking. It's, in our opinion, is, you know, we do not recommend this article.
Thank you. Are there any voters wishing to speak to this article at microphone four?
Twenty-five Harris Street. I am standing in opposition, I'm going to make some observations. And by the way, you know how you can pick and choose your data? I'm going to be citing the exact same study that the proponent has quoted. I think the first issue is to address, the town does do planning. We have an executive body in this town called the Select Board that determines our goals and priorities, and quite candidly, I totally agree with the goals and objectives. Those are town objectives. They are set by the town. We do a master plan, so it's not like we don't do planning. Secondly, Acton has a reputation in the state of having a very professional, fair, and objective planning process, professional staff and board. So, pardon me, says, what problem are we trying to fix? In terms of, I guess, again, in terms of, so this is not a question about representation. We have representation. It's that board right there. Adding another elected body, I think, potentially have competing political bodies. And I want to read three quotes that I took from the study, and I would strongly recommend, if we were going to do something like it, to do this first. This was a study that the town of Ipswich commissioned after a similar vote at their town. They said, "No," and the town meeting members said, "We'd like to move more information so we can make an informed decision." First one, the current board of the Ipswich Board stated at the town meeting floor, "The board's duty is to the zoning bylaw, not to a constituency or to an agenda." And I will tell you, that's exactly the current philosophy that we have in this town. In a similar -- in a similar, this is another town planner wrote, "Elected boards are more likely to feel beholden to a particular group of voters and more likely to not care about carefully -- pay careful attention to the rules or laws. They tend to abstain," which is equivalent of "no," "and avoid approving a controversial project, often placing the community in a legally tenuous position." I urge you to -- strongly urge you to vote no on this.
Thank you.
Can we tell people that he's the chair of the planning board?
I believe he stated that he's on the planning board.
Oh, did he? I thought he did. Okay. Thank you.
Microphone three.
Rick Karanowicz, Newtown Road. Could you tell me how many of the planning board members or employees of the town of Acton? None?
Do we have an answer? None.
Thank you.
Microphone one.
Andy Platt, Newtown Road. I think I'm in favor of this. I have a question that perhaps could help clarify a thought. It's pretty clear that there's been some difficulty in attracting to different town boards volunteers, and the election of these folks may or may not make a difference. However, five years is not a lifetime sentence, but it's a long term, and I'm wondering whether, in fact, a shorter term might be more attractive whether they're elected or not. So I'm in favor of this, but I'm wondering about the term.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Phoebe Conant, Nagog Hill Road. I actually have a question for the moderator. I think I remember that this was brought before town meeting last year. Is that correct?
Was it the same as last year?
It's almost the same, and it was recent. I don't know if it was--
It was recently, and my random excess memory isn't working that great at the moment, but it has recently come before this.
And what was the result of the vote?
It was no.
Okay. Thank you.
But it was really close.
Speaker at microphone one.
Thank you. Deborah Symes, Concord Road. And I am a co-president of Green Acton, and I am speaking for the board of Green Acton when I say that Green Acton does, in fact, support this article. Thank you.
Are there any speakers in the gym? Anyone wishing to speak from the gym?
No, Madam Moderator.
Okay. Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Vialas, Sadie Willow Street. I have a question. Is this putting, are there going to be any costs associated with this? One question I have about getting more diversity is the cost of running an election, which is modest but still significant for some people. The other question is, is there any additional cost to the town for having an election for this board?
You may respond.
Yes, there's a little bit of a legal cost, but the actual election is the town election, so it would be the ink that's extra on the ballot, effectively. Thank you. And the counting.
Speaker at microphone three.
Thank you. Alyssa Nichols, School Street. I support this article. I like the fact that if this article passes, we will have quite a bit of time to look at the issues that have been raised and make an assessment about what would be best for the town. I supported this article last year also, and as Ms. Friedrichs has already said, it was close, and I think that that vote sent -- should have sent a message to our Select Board that this warranted a closer look. And as far as I know, there hasn't been a closer look. I know there's been some conversations recently, but that's as a result of this article coming forward and not the vote last year. In terms of elected and appointed planning boards, I'm sure that they work differently for different municipalities, and, you know, seventy percent of municipalities in Massachusetts having an elected board probably represents the fact that those elected -- those municipalities are served well by an elected planning board. And I think that Acton is of a size now that we would also benefit. In terms of the Select Board as our executive body appointing planning board members, I think that that can set up a conflict because then the planning board members are not only beholden to the zoning bylaws but also the appointing body rather than town meeting, and town meeting is made up of residents, and residents are responsible for the master plan. We've written it, and the planning board should be accountable to the town meeting members, the residents of Acton, and the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Sarah Coletti, Willow Street. The last night, there is no mention in the presentation about housing, and we are in a housing crisis in Massachusetts about, and it's becoming unaffordable to live here. Last night, we voted to allow the public safety officials not to be required to live within fifteen miles here. I assume that's because it's not affordable for them to live here, and if it's not affordable for our public safety officials, it's probably not affordable for our school bus drivers and our aides and the people who work to help our elderly. We need, so I oppose this because I think it's a chance for people who are anti-housing to get a stronger voice, and I think we need housing.
Thank you. Next speaker at microphone two.
Miriam Lezak, High Street. My main problem with this is the five-year, you know, that it's a five-year term. I don't believe there is any board in town that has a five-year term, and it worries me that we would be stuck with somebody that we don't want for -- and five years is a long time. Most boards in town have a three -- most elected boards have a three-year term, including the Select Board, the Library Board of Trustees, and that makes me, that five-year term makes me very uncomfortable. Thank you.
Go ahead. Microphone four.
I feel compelled to mention, we use the word accountability here. It sounds like there's -- this is an elected board. The planning board is carrying out what we want to accomplish as a town. There's no separate agenda, number one. Number two, they're accountable to town meeting, to you guys. So I think the issue is whether or not the planning board is or is not being responsive. We've made a conscious decision in town how we manage that process, and that is by our elected officials right here. So I feel like people are saying, "Well, they're really not elected, so we're not accountable because they have the power to appoint." I think that is incorrect. This is an elected board, and this is town meeting, so we do have the chance to speak.
Since he got to speak twice, may I?
No. Seeing no others waiting to speak, we will use the clickers on this. This is a two-thirds vote. So just wait until we get the signal to turn on the clickers. Turn on your clicker with the orange button. Yes. Sync with the blue button. If anybody has any troubles, just raise your hands. Okay, in the back upper corner. Could you raise your hand again if you're still having trouble? Any others? I see a hand down here in the middle, in the front, I mean, on the side. Right behind you, sir.
Do you have the slide for yes and no? I've worked that more time.
Well, I'm just making sure everybody's got their clickers ready. Okay. Now the, if you're ready. What? Not yet?
Two, three, yes. No.
A is, are we ready for voting? Yes. Okay. Could we have the, so if you're voting yes for this item, press A. If you want to abstain, press C, and if you are voting against it, press E. Yes. Oh. And, and way up in the -- is everybody set up there? Has everybody, has everybody voted? Had a chance to vote? Let's close voting then. Next article. So Article forty-two and forty-three are similar. We will first, I will make the motion for Article forty-two, but the presentation is the same. If the presenter could make their way forward. Article forty-two, "Amend zoning bylaw, PCRC 9.6.2.3, number of dwelling units, version one." Ms. Friedrichs moves that the town amend the zoning bylaws as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. To your article.
This is a citizen petition to amend the Acton PCRC zoning laws.
Could you please introduce yourself, sir?
I'm sorry. Rick Karanowicz from Newtown Road. So if passed, this article would remove the wetlands from the calculations to the number of new houses allowed in a PCRC. It would protect more land and still encourage clustering. It was, the PCRC development was not meant to be a bonanza for developers. What is a wetland? A wetlands are land areas that contain surface water all or part of the time, as well as some adjacent land areas. All of Acton residents rely on the wetlands to filter and slowly percolate the water into the aquifer. Article number forty-two, "Amend the zoning bylaw for the PCRC. This change, if passed, would remove wetlands from the calculations relative to how many houses can be built. This article, if approved, would close a loophole in the Acton zoning bylaw, which allows developers to build more houses by including wetlands in the calculations of how many houses can be built on the lot. Article forty-three, "Amend the zoning bylaw for the PCRC. This would also remove the wetlands from the calculation. This is an alternative language based on input from the town. If both passed, they would not be contradictory." It's a clarification of what attractive land is while removing wetlands. What does all this mean? Here's a simple example of what is possible while wetlands are included in the PCRC track calculations. If a developer buys an R2 lot, which is one acre, he can build two or three houses. If that same person then buys seven acres of wetlands next to it, which would be a swamp, which seems undeveloped, undevelopable, yep, sorry. If he buys the swamp next to the property, which is undeveloped by most means, he now has eight acres, and it qualifies for a PCRC, and that means he can build fourteen houses in that one spot. PCRCs will still be used to cluster. A standard subdivision requires large streets, significant frontage, and the PCRC allows smaller common driveways and does not require frontage, and will still allow more houses than a standard subdivision. And more houses are more incentive to cluster, I'm sorry, more houses are more economic incentive to cluster. The PCRC development at one-eighty Newtown Road will be finishing up soon. This project included the wetlands and allowed eight houses to be built. Excluding the wetlands, maximum of five would have been done with the PCRC. A standard subdivision would have only allowed two. So you can see there's a big advantage to the PCRC for the developer without even including the wetlands. A standard subdivision, this is the one-eighty Newtown property, a standard subdivision would allow two houses. This lot only had three hundred, three hundred and twelve feet of frontage, so basically two-hundred and fifty feet for the first lot and fifty feet for the hammerhead behind And on the right-hand side, you can see what a PCRC looked like with the eight houses. So this is, the one on the left is the standard subdivision, and you can see all the red is the undeveloped property, whereas the right is the undeveloped property for the PCRC. So you can see that more land would have been saved if they only put two houses in Article forty-two is to amend the zoning bylaws, and forty-three is also for the amending to remove the calculations. I'm sorry. If you can't build on it, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't count it towards the housings. Please, sorry. Please vote yes to preserve more land and more open space.
Thank you. There is a presentation of information from the planning board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Zoning and making changes to zoning bylaws is a very, very complex process, and you should not under, I can't overstate enough how important that is. What I plan on doing is kind of give you what the bylaw is, background of the bylaw, what the results have been of the bylaws, so you have a better understanding of the whole thing. So, the zoning bylaw, the purpose of this presentation is to explain the existing PCRC zoning bylaw, its technical application, and the history since its adoption. The town of Acton adopted a cluster development option for residential development-- The town of Acton adopted a cluster development option for residential development back in nineteen ninety-one. Cluster developments allow for the grouping of homes closer together in order to preserve open space and the remainder of the land rather than a standard subdivision, which divides all the land into the developable lots. The goal of this bylaw was to preserve open space as well as encourage sustainable housing development. For example, the PCRC cluster development does require less infrastructure as the roads are shorter, there is less impervious materials in concrete, and smaller individual lawns require less water.
The big, the big green button. Should work. There we go.
The image shows two developments constructed and active, so these are actual developments. I'm sorry, the images shows two developments. These are actual developments that were developed under a PCRC. Both total are forty acres and in the same zoning district, an R-eight dash four. The image on the left, as you can see, is a standard sub, by right, let me emphasize, by right subdivision. A subdivision is when a new street is created and two or more lots are carved off the new street. Under state law, subdivisions are entitled to approval if they meet the design standards, the entire tract of the land is developable. In this example, each lot contains, I'm sorry.
You can move the mic just a titch, a titch further away from your mouth.
How's that? Is that better?
Not too close.
Okay, how's that?
That's probably good.
Okay. The image on, okay, okay, I'm sorry, if standards, if in a standard subdivision, if wetlands are present, one cannot build on the wetlands, but the wetland still counts toward their minimum area. So in this example, if there's an eighty thousand square foot lot, if you have two-thirds of his wetlands, the eighty thousand still counts. The image on the right is a PCRC. Sixty percent of the tractor land is set aside as open space, shown in green. The remaining forty percent of the land is developable. Similarly, if wetlands are present in the PCRC, one cannot build on the wetlands or its buffers. Visually, one can see that the PCR streets are shorter, requiring less pavement and materials for the road rail, and preserves open space, and individual lawns are much smaller, requiring less irrigation. As part of the original PCRC adopted in nineteen ninety-one, the town rezoned portions of the R-four, which is forty thousand minimum area lot, and R-eight, which is eighty thousand square foot minimum lot areas, to District, to R-eight slash four and R-ten slash eight. I apologize if I'm getting technical, but it's making my point, that's, these, in the R, so today, in the R-eight slash four district, if one is to construct a standard subdivision, they need eighty thousand square foot minimum land area per buildable lot. In the R-ten slash eight, if one is to construction a standard subdivision, they need a thousand, a hundred thousand square feet minimum land area per buildable lot. Essentially, it uses the R-ten district requirements. But if they do a PCRC, then the unit yield calculation is based off the original zoning district as if it was not changed. The only way these property owners can gain back their previous property value and unit yield would be to use a PCRC. So if you think, when they do the zoning, you're basically making the land worth less because they, you have an eighty thousand square, so you can't subdivide it. There was an effort in two thousand and two by a citizen petition to eliminate the PCRC. This article failed. As a result, the town conducted additional outreach and analysis, and in two thousand and three, the town meeting adopted two amendments to the PCRC bylaw in which further, that further restricted the number of dwelling units allowed in a PCRC. Today, the PCRC takes twenty percent cut from the total unit yield to account for wetlands and other site restrictions, as well as requiring greater setbacks between dwellings. Can I back up?
Are we almost done? Mr. Yucubi?
Yes.
Are you almost done?
Oh, I'm close, I'm sorry. Let me, okay, okay, let me just, okay, let me not get into more technical detail, okay? What I want to really is, the open space composition is sixty percent of the overall tract and cannot have a great percentage of wetlands. This, this particular side, I think, is very important because it gives you an idea of what the results have been. Since the implementation of PCRC, we've saved six hundred and twenty-eight acres have been preserved through this. There have been a total of seventeen developments, six hundred and twenty-eight acres of open space, more importantly.
Please bring your remarks to an end. Conclusion?
Basically, I think, what I want, the point I want to make is, eighty-nine percent of the open space that was saved was uplands, and seventy acres was wetlands. So there's not been the abuse of using wetlands to build in terms of what has actually happened in town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The select board recommendation on this article?
The board voted not to recommend either of these articles as-is. The select board had close votes on both of these and a lot of discussion. Many on the board expressed an interest in an open discussion with the public, staff, and boards about both the larger questions of the goals of our subdivision bylaws, as well as the implementation details, given the town's increased focus on sustainability. We recognized the possible environmental upside of having fewer units in a PCRC, but also the downside of this change, that the financial and risk profiles of PCRC versus conventional development could mean that developers might choose more often to revert to a conventional subdivision plan over a PCRC, and that would be a loss, since the environmental footprint of a sprawled subdivision is generally much larger than a more compact one. We had different intuitions about whether the pros or cons weighed more. It didn't seem like intuition was a good way to make a decision on such a complicated matter. So whether or not this passes, a deeper look is in order. The board voted not to recommend either of these articles as-is.
Thank you. The finance committee recommendation?
The finance committee voted to recommend both forty-two and forty-three.
Would you care to elaborate?
No.
Are there other speakers than the article sponsor, or those who have not yet spoken? I see, I think, some people moving toward the mic. The speaker at microphone one.
Yes, David Hahn, School Street. I'll speak as a member of the design review board. We, we took a good look at the PCRC bylaw, and I think this is a flaw in the bylaw. As far as we know, there's no other zoning mechanism available in town where you can count wetlands in the calculation. So that's one thing. But in general, we agree with the selectmen that the PCRC has some other flaws in it, and I think it'd be a good idea for the town to thoroughly reexamine it, because we've found four or five items that we think need correcting and would be helpful to generate better PCRCs. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Sorry, Lauren Rosenzweig-Morton, Marshall Path, Acton. To full disclosure, I live in a PCRC. I would, I have a few questions. I think it, what I'd like to understand is what is the intent of this change? Because I believed that the main intent, when we developed this zoning, I was ten years on the planning board, it happened before my time, but I would like to know if the intent is to save open space, or if the intent, intent is to reduce the number of houses in town.
You may respond.
Thank you. So, first of all, you live in a place that I wasn't arguing with.
Could you answer the question?
And, and so, I'm not talking about revisioning history. The intent was, in the future, as upland becomes more and more scarce, allowing the wetlands to be included allows more huge houses fired by gas and more destruction of the land unnecessarily, because it'll still allow twenty, thirty percent, sometimes half as many, houses again. So as long as there's one more house allowed, they're going to do a cluster, because there's less infrastructure, they don't have to pave as much, et cetera. So I urge you to vote for this. Thank you.
You may, you may continue.
I would like to check in with the town professionals to find out if that is exactly true. Will this reduce, in every case, the number of houses? And what will be the effect on open space?
Could we have Planning Director Kristen Gishard address that question?
Could we have the planning director to address that question?
Good evening. I think in order to answer that question in a technical manner, we would want to do an analysis. So we would have to take a look at, really, all of the parcels that are remaining that would qualify for a PCRC, looking at parcels that are contiguous of eight acres. And we would want to take a look to see if a standard subdivision, so that, that long road, the layout of a road, and carving up those individual lots for a subdivision, how many that would yield, versus looking at the PCRC bylaw that's being proposed tonight, and see how many that would yield. And that would really give us an understanding. It's, it's hard to answer that question without really doing an analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Thank you, Alyssa Nichols, School Street. I'm in support of this article. I, and I appreciate that it was adopted in nineteen ninety-one and amended in two thousand and three. Nineteen years later, I think it's time for another small tweak. I support removing the wetlands, because wetlands are already protected by local, state, and federal law, the Wetlands Protection Act. So the benefit to the town of protecting these open spaces is really, you know, it's fabulous, but also inconsequential, because they are already not developable. In terms of an analysis of the remaining parcels, I think that that would be really challenging, because you can add two parcels together, which is what happened at the Elm Street development, and that was one of the examples in the presentation. So as long as anybody can get that minimum acreage, even if it's almost entirely wetlands, then, then they can have a significant increase in the number of houses. I have an incredible respect for all of the planning staff. Their explanations of this bylaw, as we were discussing it at planning board meetings and at select board meetings, were really, really helpful. But given all of that wonderful explanation and, you know, appreciation for the complexity of zoning bylaw changes, it still remains for me that, you know, an eighty percent calculation on the, the number of houses is a one-size-fits-all, and, and you just can't do that with land, because with different parcels, you could have a parcel with eighty percent wetlands, or you could have a parcel with ten percent wetlands. And the point here is that the remaining parcels in town are pretty wet, because Acton is pretty swampy. So we've built a lot on our uplands, and there aren't a lot remaining, and I fully support this article, and I hope that you do, too.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in the gym wishing to speak?
We do not.
Thank you. We'll go to microphone two.
Hi, I'm David Martin. I live on High Street. The intent of this petition is to drive more subdivisions instead of PCRCs. However, clever layout of subdivisions can apportion the wetlands among the lots, and so it doesn't necessarily reduce the area built. It could easily result in more land being cleared for McMansions. In, in fact, the petitioners say that people, developers, choose PCRCs because it means less paving and less infrastructure for them, but that's what we want, is less paving and infrastructure. We want to preserve more, more land. Basically, because this petition has not gone through the normal vetting process, there are unknown consequences. I don't support this.
Thank you. Back to microphone one.
Deborah Symes, Concord Road, again speaking as a co-president of Green Act, and I am just reporting that Green Act and Board of Directors decided to support these, both of these articles, or whichever one survives. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
I just wanted to point out that Mr. Yucubi mentioned that no lots would be, or no houses would be developed in the wetlands. The property at one-eighty Newtown Road, multiple homes, were actually built in the wetland buffer zone. The planning board did not, well, I should say, the Conservation Commission didn't take into account the slope of the property, which in itself would have been enough to reject the project. And there are no lot, minimum lot sizes in PCRC developments.
Thank you. Microphone four.
Thank you. I, I wanted to kind of reiterate in what Mr. Snyder Grant, what Mr. Martin, and Mr. Hahn mentioned, because I think this is a question of a complex question. I think process matters. I think it could use an improvement, but I think it's a process that we need to go through to make sure we don't end up with unintended consequences. And in terms of the presentation by the petitioner, I, I need to, I feel compelled, there are some factual errors. Number one, in reference to the image shown on one-eighty Newtown Road in the citizen petition presentation, the petitioner incorrectly referred to a hand-drawn plan of two lots as a subdivision. This former development is actually what's referred to as an A-N-R, Approval Under the Subdivision Control Lot Not Required. So first of all, that was not a standard subdivision, so technically, that was, secondly, the citizen petition presentation showed that only two lots could be created at one-eighty-two Newtown Road, using Newtown Road as frontage. For an A-N-R, yeah. A subdivision would actually include the creation of a new road. And the creation of a new road allows, then, the building and defining of lots. So that is a little disingenuous, because you see two lots of standard subdivision. No, a standard subdivision, you would see a new street coming off of Newtown, and then the standard subdivision, depending on what would be allowed. So it's, again, another example where I really agree with a number of people who said, probably needs some tweaking, we should go through that process, and the, and the town planner could put it best in terms of, I'd have to look at it. There's not a real simple answer to that. But I thought that was important, to understand the difference between what's called an A-N-R and a standard subdivision. It was misused in the petitioner's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just going to pause a second, see if that, okay. Speaker at microphone two.
I'll be Alice, Willow Street. First of all, I'm rather disappointed that Pinkham has a recommendation, but doesn't tell us anything about the reasoning behind that. That does not help us very much. Second, this seems very complex. I suspect I'm not the only person confused by all this. The ramifications clearly are confusing and unknown, and I think that there might be something here, but I think it really needs analysis, and it seems like it might just be an attempt to keep housing from being built. So I will vote no on this.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Yes, Miles Fidelman, five-thirty-one Old Stone Brook. I'm, I'm a little confused by this, because it sounds like all of this discussion is talking about single-family houses. And it seems like if the goal is to conserve land, make better use of it, and protect wetlands, we should be talking about multifamily units and size restrictions on the buildings. And I didn't hear anything, and I wonder if any of the proponents could, or the opponents could actually talk to, to that issue.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
I'm Jim Carey from Guswood Road here in Acton. I can tell that I'm confused. I want to support protecting our wetlands, but I'm hearing that it's much more complicated than that. How can we change this discussion so that we're discussing a concentrated effort to actually address this issue? to actually address this issue in a way that we can bring an amendment forward? And that's a question for you, moderator, because I'm just confused.
Well, so all we can vote on and all we can discuss is the motion, the motion as brought forward, which was filed through citizen petition. And that, that's what's before us. That is all we can vote on. It, I appreciate the fact that people are confused. I think it just speaks to, this is a difficult way to have this discussion in, without going outside, to have a full and frank discussion, as I believe somebody once said, on the topic because we are bound by the confines of the motion itself and the article itself, which is what we're, like I said, what we're bound by.
So the fact that they didn't is why we're here.
Speaker at microphone four.
John Peterson, 6 Jackson Drive. I would like to move to amend as follows, to see if the town will request the town planner to review and report on section 9.6.2.3, number of dwelling units of the zoning bylaws, period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can you bring the? But it will, can still be examined. I think I said that correctly.
As a point of order?
Yes.
If you really want to pass this today, you have to vote no for this. Right?
Right.
If they vote, if you really want to pass this, you have to vote no to the amendment.
You know you're talking into a mask to me.
Sorry. So I believe that if people want, that technically speaking, if they want to pass this today, they should vote no to table it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So yes. So the motion is to lay the motion, Article number 42, on the table. Does require a two-thirds. So we will use the clickers.
Could you ask a question?
Say what?
Could you ask a question?
Oh, yes, I could do that. Do the Select Board have a recommendation?
Can we have one minute?
One minute. Yeah, a minute.
Jim? No, you can do that. Either way, whichever way. Great, okay. So we're, we're ready.
Okay. I hear a point of order.
I, I would like if you could use other language so that, I think it's, it's sort of, um, using the words, put it on the table or table it, or whatever you just said, it, put it on the table. I think, could you say it in less sort of cliched English so that everybody could understand?
Well, that is, I'm. this legislature is not accustomed to meeting on a regular basis, so maybe unfamiliar with the term, but it does mean to put it aside without consideration.
Except you're, you're not.
All right. The Select Board recommendation, please.
In our, in a quick discussion up here, we discussed that setting it aside, setting this motion aside goes toward what, the things we were discussing, both at our meeting and earlier today, that this issue needs more examination. And it also goes to the, the person making the motion's intent that the town planner take another look. So we just decided to be in favor of this motion to lay it on the table.
Thank you. The Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee just voted to not recommend tabling it. And we would like to have the Planning Board and Select Board give this some better consideration. We voted for it initially because we felt that it closed a loophole to preserve wetlands, to help preserve wetlands. And we also felt that the Planning Board had given it more thought than they actually had, which we didn't find out until later, so.
Alrighty. So as, as I said, this does take a, there, there is a, a motion. It is not debatable. So if that is your intent, if there are any further points of order, yes, sir, at number four.
George Morton, Marshall Path. I have a question about the meaning of laying it on the table. Is there a legal obligation to reconsider it at a subsequent town meeting as it is worded now?
I don't think so. No, there is not.
So is laying it on the table like voting it down?
No. You heard.
Okay.
All right. Let's prepare to vote. Yes, it would just take a motion to take it off the table.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
That the definition of lay on the table is in the glossary
There you go.
of this warrant for everybody to see. And it basically says you can put it away forever. It says, "Lay on the table is a motion used to end debate temporarily or permanently on a given motion. A motion laid on the table may remain there forever or may be retrieved by the appropriate take-from-the-table vote." I am not going to look at what take-from-the-table vote.
All right. Turn on the clickers. Sync the clickers. Is everybody, everybody's clicker's working? Great. All right. If you are in favor of laying on the table, not yourself, the item, vote A or yes. You may abstain with C. And if you are not in favor of laying on the table, vote E or no. Does require two-thirds. The motion clearly passes by the two-thirds required to lay on the table. It does not. Could the sponsor please come forward? Which may sound very familiar. Ms. Friedrichs moves that the town amend the zoning bylaw as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Go ahead. Microphone three.
Yes, relative to the Planning Board's graphics, they put green in the area that was preserved under PCRC, but they failed to show the green that would have happened because the developer almost always builds right next to the impervious. Also, under more housing, there's more roofs and more impervious with all of the driveways and stuff like that. And relative to affordability, I, I totally respect that we need to have more affordable housing. We have solutions for that hopefully coming up next. And, but these aren't affordable houses. $500,000 condos aren't affordable. They're never going to be unless a magic trickle-down money comes from Washington or something. I feel like we need to be, if, I just want to make it clear that I would not be here doing this if the Planning Board was doing, in fact, their job and planning. And when we bring things forward to the planning staff and they ignore us and don't put it on the agenda, that's how we end up here. So please, tell your officials to get the Planning Board to do some planning, to actually preserve land, get environmental justice. The housing that's not, is being built is not affordable and never will be. It's very subtle, not-so-subtle redlining to keep allowing mansions to fill up all the buildable land that's left. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone two.
I think that this article, like the one before, is a prime example of what happens when we accept petition articles which have not been well thought through and not discussed with other people. I think that the planning, for, for the past 10 years, I have lobbied to have a recodification of the town's zoning bylaws. Granted, it costs some money, but it should be done. There are many parts of the zoning bylaws that are now on the books that need to be fixed. This perhaps might be one of them. If we get behind an article to push for that, we may get some real progress. This is taking potshots at small parts of a, of a program which is totally ineffective and not worth, or the waste of our time.
Speaker at microphone four.
Move to table.
Is, is there a second?
There is.
It has been moved and seconded to table. Once again, requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Okay, you may turn on the clickers. And sync. Voting is open. Is everyone all set? Voting is closed. Voting is closed. The tabling clearly passes by the two-thirds required. That brings us to Article 44, amend zoning map at 32 Weatherby Street. Mr. Durkin moves that the town amend the zoning bylaw map as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Falwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thomas Falwell is out of 21 Greenside Lane in Acton. I am also attorney in conk, and I represent John and Stacy Durkin, the proponents who many of you may know, they've lived in, at 18 Weatherby Street in Acton where they also conduct their business, and have been there for over 40 years. They're over in the corner. Just to give you a perspective of what the parcel we're talking about.
You have to point, point toward the front, toward the blue screen there. The big button.
Sorry about that. The parcel that's involved is outlined in yellow at 32 Weatherby. It's on the opposite side of the Bruce Freeman Bike Trail.
Could you stay close to the mic? You're kind of drifting in and out there.
It's on the opposite side of the Bruce Freeman Bike Trail from their, from the Durkins' residence and their business at Onyx Corporation. They purchased the property in 2020 principally to keep it from being developed. They didn't want development to occur on the property, high-density development or any development. They bought it to protect themselves with the idea that because it has been previously used for commercial purposes, they could, they could adaptively reuse the building that's on it for ancillary purposes for their, for their operation at Onyx, and also to perhaps use the rear portion of the, of the property for recreational use that Teamworks was interested in developing. Developing that required them to seek a rezoning because it's in the R2 zone. On the property now is an existing historical residence which they have actually rehabbed to some degree, interior-wise, in which they rent, and that is an important structure which will remain under any circumstances. This is, these are a few pictures I'll just run through of the existing buildings that were on, that are on that site that have been there for many years, were used for manufacturing and related purposes for a former owner. They discontinued them some years ago. The Durkins have studied it. They feel they can adaptively reuse the buildings by doing some renovations to use it for some of their administrative and related purposes for Onyx, Onyx's operations, that they've, they've got over 100 employees at Onyx, and they're, they think they can use this property at the same time to spread some of their people around into the building and store some things in the buildings as well. These are quick, quick, some just quick pictures of the building. As you see, they're, they're, they've been there for some time. They've been not used for decades. Just a little bit about the Durkins. Many of you may know them. They've, they've been a positive part of the Acton community for excess of 40 years. They, they, kids have all gone to the Acton box bros schools. Their family business, Onyx Corporation, which is in material handlings and trucking business, has been at this site since the 80s, and it's been a good neighbor. In fact, they got a special permit from the Select Board to build a, a structure there a few years ago, and it's, and they've built it, got permission, built it, and they're using it. Need a little bit more space. They've also been involved in the community. They've done a lot of things, sort of some behind-the-scenes for people, things that don't know about. They've, they've done work because they do site work on some of the baseball fields and things of that nature. They also, when the bike trail was being built on their own initiative, if you've gone down there, you'll see there's a very large and long hedge of albaty that they planted at their expense to, to shield the bike trail from Onyx's operation. So that's some of the types of things that they do. As I said, this would rezone this property from R2 to EAV2, which is the current zoning designation for their existing building, which would allow that building that I showed you before to be used as a trade shop, which is what they're building at Onyx at 18 Weatherby Street is now, which they had permission for. They, they purchased the property, as I said, back in 2020 with that purpose in mind, but mostly to keep it from being developed. They, they also, as I say, they also wanted to, you know, move some of their operations into, into that building. We have the full support of the Select Board, the Planning Board, and the Finance Committee for this particular use in keeping with, in keeping with the existing use of Onyx at 18 Weatherby Street. So the plan has three basic components. The adaptive reuse of the buildings that I showed you to accommodate Onyx offices and administrative functions, as well as some storage, a possible use of the rare open space for possible teamwork's use, and more importantly, the retention of the existing historical house there. They're excited to do this. They see a lot of community benefits that, again, prevents the construction of dense housing in the area, helps a local business to grow. They have over 100 employees, more local good jobs, ensuring that the, that section of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail will, is protected and enhanced, providing for the possible expansion of Teamworks from, onto the rear portion of the site, and preserving the historical 1880 Patrick O'Neil House that's on the site. We hope the town meeting will vote to rezone this property to allow them to do these things and to, this is, this is an employer who's been in this town and a good citizen for years, and they want to continue the business and they're, together with their sons who are actively involved in the business and hope to be doing this for many years to come. So I'm available for any questions if anyone has any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What is the Select Board's recommendation?
We voted to recommend this. Bringing the abandoned building into office use can increase both employment and tax revenue. We heard two main concerns. The first was whether this would mean an expansion of their industrial operations, creating additional dust and noise for neighbors. The EAV2 zoning does not allow industrial operations. It does allow business operations, so the office use that they're, planning there is perfectly legal if it was an EAV2. Now, as an aside, to clarify, the existing Onyx industrial operation at 18 Weatherby is in the EAV2 district. That was there before the current zoning, which means it can continue as is, but needs special permits when they want to change or expand their operations or footprint at 18, which they have done before. The second concern was how much to lean on the word of the proponent, that they would avoid using the new zoning to build housing. We thought their word was good, primarily because their motivation for buying the parcel in the first place was to avoid housing there. Residential neighbors tend to be unhappy about being next door to an industrial operation, and Onyx might face pressure to change or shut down their operation if there was people living right next door to this sometimes loud, sometimes dusty industrial operation. Second, secondly, the family and the business have deep roots in Acton. Going back on their word would be a severe hit to their reputation. In addition to this, perhaps Onyx will look into using the transfer of development rights process to sell off their right to put housing in there to a developer in the regular EAV zone. The, the EAV zoning, East Acton Village zoning, was designed so that East Acton Village, right along Great Road, would be, you know, compact, dense development, a mix of businesses and residential. The EAV2 zoning was designed to be less dense, more spread out, and to protect the, the Brook nearby. So the allow, the law does allow people to transfer their development rights away from EAV2 and put them into EAV. For, so, for all that, we voted unanimously to recommend this.
Thank you. The Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends this article based on the track record of the applicant. It is true that zoning change does not require formal commitment of the landowner to do one thing and not another. Therefore, there is a risk that unexpected development, either now or in the future, will be allowed by right. But given that there is an existing structure on the property that was built when the parcel was once zoned industrial and is now unusable on a residential lot, and given that the landowner is looking to expand a business that's been right across the street in Acton for decades, we believe that a change in zoning on this parcel is consistent with the feel of the area, the desire to help existing Acton businesses, and the recapture of previously usable land and property.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Yes, I am against this article for the same reasons I was against it last year. There won't be any affordable housing on it either way. You can be sure of that. To me, this is, you know, just like you heard from the last one, then they're against my article, that careful studies should be made, that you should have forums and all that. Well, they had one hearing and everybody voted to support. To me, this is just a perfect example of poor planning, wink, wink, special exception by connected people. I urge you to vote no. Thank you. And they can, they can, I believe, grant their grandfather to use the site for the uses that they've been using it for, and nothing's stopping them from doing that. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone three.
Yes, Madam Moderator, to make sure we're not wasting our time, would Town Council tell us why this is not considered spot zoning?
Looking at the parcel that's being rezoned to the zoning of a contiguous zone, I believe, if you put the map back up, it's unlikely to be considered spot zoning, although that's a legal determination that would be made by a court and has not yet been made.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Hi, Franny Osman, Half Moon Hill. I actually, I hear a lot of really good arguments, so I would want to support them in doing this. But the couple of arguments that I want to be careful not to include in there is a preference for not having dense housing. I understand not wanting housing right next to your business for the reasons that Mr. Snyder Grant mentioned, but I, I just, I don't like us putting in things like, oh, we don't want dense housing because I think that's the way we can get less, more affordable housing in our town, is to have more dense housing. I also want to note that there's been a lot of talk about how long they've been in town, and we were warned not to put that as a value that we advertise at this meeting, so. And, as I said, it sounds reasonable, and I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Hi, Conrad Cook. So I live at 33 Weatherby Street, which is opposite, yeah, 32. So, so EAV stands for East Acton Village, whereas if you look at what's happening on the current, in the current business, it looks more like an industrial estate, which, which I understand I had some correspondence with the zoning officer. They helpfully explained the history, so that's all fine. But my concern is that this, the building on 32, which used to be a workshop, a manufacturing facility, it's, it's quite large, and so you could get a lot of office staff in there, which means presumably that space will be freed up in the, what's it, permitted but non-conforming part of the regular business. And so they'll be doing more industrial operations there than currently. So I'll be voting against it.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Hi, Eric Peterson, 36 Weatherby Street. I'm actually the largest abuter to this property, and I have been, I won't say how long, but the person who owned it before, this has been a zoned residential from many years ago, but was never, ever used that way. The lot does have a residence on it, but that building has always been industrial. And I think it would serve a good purpose to keep that building the way it is, but refurbish it and use it for the business. It is tied right up against the bike path, is a good location for, you know, a clean, new office space as opposed to an industrial building that is abandoned right now and does have some, you know, problems with vandalism or, you know, not being kept up. But now that it is purchased and in that plight, I think that a reasonable use of the space would be the office. I actually abut the Teamworks as well, and I would support, you know, as much as it does affect my backyard, I do support Teamworks and the use that they have for not only interior, but also exterior space, and would love to see them be able to expand as well. I think that changing this zoning makes sense for where it is. And surprisingly, you know, considering I am a resident, I would vote for this to change it back to EAV2, which is what it probably should have been when it was first brought up.
Thank you. Next speaker at microphone three.
Ed Gillen, Brook Street. And I'm wondering if, is this an advertisement or is this something to vote on, quite honestly? Like, you, you guys also too, this is just my opinion, I must say, but why don't you deal with black and white issues instead of all the gray and convolute everything and add all these extra words into it and stuff? It's like, this is just ridiculous. I'm against overdeveloping anything, quite honestly. I say, take the dilapidated, ridiculous, broken-down buildings and, and properties that nobody wants and build on those, and stop trying to force more structure into this place and just save the environment. So, and maybe you guys want to go home and be honest with yourselves and talk to the people that answer, that you have to answer to before you bring us more lies to us and confusion. That's just my opinion, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, at microphone three.
Alyssa Nichols, School Street. I am in support of this article. It's always tricky when, I, I like to hear from neighbors to find out how they feel, what they want, how it's going to impact their lives. So it's tricky when you have one neighbor who is against and one neighbor who is for. But the reason that I support this is because it supports not just one, but two businesses in town, and all of us need to better support our businesses. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Madam Moderator, I move the question.
There is a motion to cut off debate. And a second. All who are in favor, please say aye. All who oppose, please say nay. The motion clearly carries.
It carries in the gym as well.
The motion we are considering does require two-thirds vote, so please get your clickers. This is to amend the zoning map at 32 Weatherby Street. Okay, you may turn them on. Plus, press the blue button. Are we ready? Voting is open. A for yes, B, I'm sorry, C if you wish to abstain, and E for no. Is everybody all set? Okay, wait a minute. Tellers over here on the aisle? Okay, voting is now closed. The motion clearly carries by the two-thirds required. That brings us to Article 45, amend zoning bylaw, nonconforming structures in the historic districts, requires two-thirds vote to pass. Mr. Yucubi moves that the town amend the zoning bylaw as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Yucubi, to your article.
Madam Moderator. Historically, houses and outbuildings were constructed close to front and side rear yard, setbacks creating the pattern we see in historic districts today. The HGC approached the planning board a few months back with an issue they were seeing arise more frequently. When a homeowner in a historic district requests to demolish and reconstruct a structure like a garage or a barn, the historic district then cannot allow the structure to be reconstructed in its original location due to the current zoning setback requirements. Homes and structures constructed in the 18th and 19th century were often built close to the road or by side of the property line. Over time, zoning requirements for larger lot sizes, frontage and yard setback requirements were put into place. Acton zoning bylaw now requires greater setbacks in front-side yards. This is an example of what we're trying, this has led to odd situations within the historic district, which is why they came to talk to the planning board, where historic structures such as a barn could not be rebuilt at all because there simply wasn't enough usable land to meet the current setback requirements, or the location of the structure would need to be placed in an incompatible location from a historical perspective. One recent example required the homeowner to obtain a variance from the zoning board of appeals for the reconstruction of a collapsing barn, in addition to receiving approval from the HGC due to the nonconforming setback of the historic barn on the property. Let me ask you, variances have a very high threshold. One must prove a hardship, financial or otherwise, and based on shape, soil, topography, on the lot of structures. This article would allow the HGC to permit the reconstruction of an existing structure in the same location regardless of the zoning regulations. The location of structures in a historic district preserves a sense of place, which is vital to retaining the historical identity of the districts. These districts preserve not only the history of architectural styles, but also how past generations chose to develop before the zoning laws were in place. By adopting this bylaw, it will allow the Historic District Commission to maintain the authentic historic rhythm and design of the districts. I would say the planning board also strongly endorsed, enthusiastically endorsed this article.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Select Board recommendation.
Madam Moderator, the Select Board voted to recommend this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted to recommend this article.
Thank you. Are there any members of the meeting wishing to speak to this article? Seeing none, we will vote. Okay, you may turn on the clickers. And you may vote. A for yes, C to abstain, and E for no.
Want to give a winner?
Yes. Is everyone set? The motion clearly passes by the two-thirds required. That brings us to Article 46, amend the zoning bylaw, accessory apartments, also requires two-thirds vote to pass. Mr. Capetta moves that the town amend the zoning bylaw as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Capetta, to your article.
John Capetta, Concord Road. Acton's recently adopted Housing Production Plan of 2020, Strategy 11 directs the town to identify institutional barriers and solutions to further fair housing. The goal of this article is to increase housing opportunities in Acton and affirmatively further fair housing through a variety of methods, including rehab of existing structures for accessory apartments. Town staff has been receiving comments from residents who would like to construct an accessory apartment, but find the existing bylaws are too restrictive. The Planning Division began a community conversation on this topic to discuss potential changes to the bylaw as a first step in implementing this housing production strategy and address the needs of residents. The Planning Division met with the Planning Board, Acton Community Housing Corporation, Commission on Disabilities, and the Citizens Group Housing for All to gather feedback on proposed ideas. The current bylaw allows for different types of accessory apartments, and there's basically four that you can see on the screen. Interior conversions, for example, like converting your basement into an apartment, accessory apartment. Example two, conversion of an existing detached structure, perhaps like an old garage or a barn. Three, new construction of a detached structure, for example, a tiny home. And fourth, new construction of an attached addition. Each of these types has specific regulations on size, bedroom count, design, and its location on the lot for new construction. The following provisions exist today and are not proposed to be changed. Only one accessory apartment is allowed on the lot. The owner must reside on the property. It cannot be sold off. Attached additions must have the appearance of a single-family home. Detached accessory apartments constructed new must be located to the side or the rear. Short-term rental is restricted in single-family residential zoning districts, and renting and boarding of up to three people is allowed by right. So these are the six changes. All the other restrictions would remain in place. These are the six changes. One, accessory apartments that are within an attached addition or interior renovation, like a basement, are currently restricted to 800 square feet. This bylaw would allow for an increase in the size. They must still be less than 50% of the existing structure. Number two, the bylaw to allow for newly constructed detached accessory apartments, like tiny homes, was adopted in 2019, and since that time, the Planning Division received several inquiries about constructing a tiny home. But the owners did not decide to move forward because the size was too limiting for their needs. With only 500 square feet, it is very difficult to accommodate proper ADA turning space for a 180-degree turn in a place like a bathroom or a room, and then still have adequate space for the remainder of the apartment. Parts three and four, Strategy 11 of the Housing Production Plan notes that zoning provisions that limit the number of bedrooms may violate fair housing laws. Currently, Acton mandates that accessory apartments shall not have more than two bedrooms for attached and interior accessory apartments, and limits three bedrooms per pre-existing detached apartments. This bylaw would eliminate any concern regarding fair housing and eliminate barriers imposed on certain family situations. And finally, the last two of the six. Whoop. Sorry about that. Currently, accessory apartments in converted garages or barns require a special permit. The Housing Production Plan Goal Four, Sustainability, directs the town to encourage rehabilitation of existing structures for affordable housing. Where rental housing is naturally more affordable, eliminating the special permit barrier and allowing the rehab of these structures into accessory apartments will help to achieve these goals. Six, the last one. Accessory apartments require one parking space if there is not adequate parking already on the lot. One must be provided. This amendment would dictate that any new parking space for the apartment must be located to the side or to the rear of the buildings. That proposal, the one I just mentioned, came directly from community feedback that was gathered at one of the Planning Board's meetings this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The Select Board's recommendation.
For all the reasons that John outlined, the Select Board recommends this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. While the speaker noted, many of these bylaws were amended in 2019. After some discussion on the Finance Committee, we generally agreed that some of these appeared to be bylaw creep to us, incremental expansions of an existing law that was more recently changed in 2019. And to that end, the Finance Committee voted to not recommend this article.
Thank you. The speaker at microphone three.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Janet Adachi, Simon Happden Lane, but I am here speaking as chairman of the Acton Community Housing Corporation, which voted to support this article. ACHC, for those of you who don't know, ACHC advocates for and facilitates the creation of affordable housing. Many in Acton may know about Massachusetts Chapter 40B, which is the Affordable Housing Law. But there are other ways of creating affordable housing. Habitat for Humanity has created a number of affordable residences in Acton, both via rehab of existing structures and via new construction. The accessory apartment provision of the Acton zoning bylaw is another potential tool for increasing affordable housing options in Acton. The proposed changes will, among other things, address some provisions that have hindered residents wishing to create accessory apartments. In one instance that I know of, the current dimensional limitation was a significant problem for a resident simply trying to create an accessory apartment in his basement for the living caretaker for his severely disabled child. Residents concerned about the impact on the look and feel of the neighborhood should feel reassured that the bylaw provisions on appearance, parking areas, and the like remain substantially unchanged. Not all accessory apartments will fit the legal definition of affordable housing, and accessory apartments might not be a significant source of new affordable units in Acton. But for those residents who regard an accessory apartment as a much-needed solution, the option can enable an independent and potentially more actually affordable living arrangement that would be difficult or impossible to find elsewhere at the same cost, which is consistent with the ACHC's mission, and is why I urge you to approve this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Hi, Franny Osman, 16 Half Moon Hill. I first would like to speak for the Commission on Disabilities, which voted in support of this article. It really helps families with someone with a disability, both because a caretaker or a member of the family can live in the accessory unit. And the easier we make this for people, the better. And I just wanted to make my own comment about, I've sometimes heard people feel like, somebody used the word creep, like this is going to, you know, cause all these units all over town. And I spoke to, just today, I spoke to two of the planning staff, and they talked about the limited, very limited number of applications, and the fact that people often get discouraged because of one of these limitations that this is releasing, that this is making a little bit more flexible, and that they really had very few. And one of the most recent was somebody with a family with, that wanted to put a unit in their backyard for someone with a disability. And I think anything we can do to make it easier for people to stay in town, to stay in their houses, and to have added affordable sections of their house, we should make it as easy as possible for them. So I will be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone two.
I'm turning this microphone into a question microphone. I am in full support of this article, just want to make that clear. My name is Alyssa Nickel. Madam Moderator, if I may direct this question to the Finance Committee, I do not understand what bylaw creep means, and I would love some elaboration on what that means to the Finance Committee, specifically the negative financial impact they see. Thank you.
A response would be allowed?
Yeah, thank you. As the original speaker indicated, a number of these changes are incremental to the existing bylaws, which were just most recently changed in 2019. For example, the increase in square footage, the changing of bedroom requirements, as well as the parking requirements. While a lot of these considerations are certainly worthwhile, we feel that obviously they should have been considered as well in 2019. So, to that point, a lot of these individual items, they do seem to be incremental changes to this bylaw, and while maybe the environment has changed some since the pandemic, 2019 was very most recently in the near past, so. Other than that, the discussion of Finance Committee generally revolved around being uncertain of what the tax impact to the town and the taxpayer would be, and without a more robust assessment of that, it's a little bit difficult to determine whether this is a positive or negative for the taxpayer at this point.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
I move the question.
There is a motion to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry with the two-thirds required. This is also a two-thirds vote required, so I would be willing, yes, sir.
Why is this a two-thirds vote after the housing choice legislation said that it would be majority vote for many housing questions? I don't understand that.
Do we have an answer?
Thank you. That's a good question. It's one we've looked into a number of times with the planning office, and based on guidance from the state, the changes proposed by this zoning bylaw do not fulfill what's required under the Housing Choice Act to make it just a majority vote. under the Housing Choice Act to make it just a majority vote.
Thank you. As I was going to say, I am willing to give a try to a voice vote, and if it is close, we can go to the clickers. That will, if people are okay with that. Okay. All who are in favor of amending zoning bylaw regarding accessory apartments, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion clearly carries here. Is there a...
It was unanimous in the gym.
Excellent. The motion carries by the two-thirds required. Next, Article number 47, Home Rule Petition: Legal Notice Media Requirements. Ms. Nagaretti moves that the town authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for a Home Rule Act insubstantially the forms set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded to your article.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Good. Okay. So, welcome, everyone. I'm here to talk to you about warrant Article 47, a Home Rule Petition for Legal Notice Media Requirements.
The big button.
The big button. There we go. To provide a little bit of background, as to why we need this Home Rule Petition, it really comes down to two key things. Newspapers across our country, including our local newspaper, The Beacon, has announced this year that they are switching to a web-only format, given lowering subscriptions and financial constraints exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Second, the town is required to hold public hearings on topics such as zoning board and commission applications, revisions to the zoning bylaw, and changes to the historic district. Massachusetts general law specifically requires that legal notices on these public hearings are posted in the printed version of these newspapers. Given this, we come to you to ask for your support for Article 47. Today, your vote will authorize the Select Board to petition the Massachusetts General Court authorizing Acton to use alternative means of publishing legal notices for public hearings. Alternatives that will help us more effectively reach town residents include local newspapers either in electronic or paper formats, the bulletin board outside the town clerk's office, and the town website. And on the slide is a brief primer on what a Home Rule Petition is, just in case it's helpful. In conclusion, thank you all for being here, and we hope you support warrant Article 47 by voting aye today. Back to you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. The Finance Committee recommendation?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Speaker at microphone three.
So, I like having print. I like being able to rip it out and put it on my desk. I found out that a lot of people like that, too, especially people who don't have access to, already access to a computer, they have to use a smartphone. And so I urge the town to pay a nice small business, Action Unlimited, and put the ads in that. And so I hope that, could I ask a question to our leaders? Will they commit to putting it into the Action Unlimited, which is a nice local business? It would allow greater justice because people who don't necessarily have access to the computer or know how to find it on these websites, so you will go to The Beacon and try and find something, good luck. And so I wouldn't say that with Doris Hilberg, we love you, you know, we miss you. But these conglomerates are making it really impossible to find things, especially anything that's supposed to be public access. So I appreciate that it's probably beyond the town website somewhere, but again, how to find it, you know, it's not that easy. I work with a lot of vulnerable people and trying to guide them through something on the, on the smartphone as opposed to copying a thing and handing them a piece of paper. So I would appreciate it, hearing from our officials, whether they would like or plan to print in the Action Unlimited.
Would the Select Board care to respond? Oh, I'm sorry.
I can say, so that is something we can definitely take under advisement. One thing we did note within the Home Rule Petition is the ability of either using or posting either in the printed version or the online, and so that way, we do have a little bit more flexibility as to what forms we use, but definitely under advisement, for sure.
Commitment.
Thanks. That would be outside the bounds of this.
That would be beyond the scope of this, yeah, Home Rule Petition.
Yes. Speaker at microphone one.
I'm Eve Franny Osmond, Half Moon Hill. Does the notice that's sent to a butters about hearings and these things go to all the members of those buildings, say? Or does it just go to the owners?
To my understanding, it's just posted in the local newspaper, and so it's available to the public, whoever reads it, but I'll also defer if anyone has a specific answer to that.
I guess I meant the butter notices.
Go ahead, Mr. Martin.
So first, we should be clear that butter notices are not covered by this article, but butter notices go to the owners of the dwellings.
Is this still? I hope that we look at that, because I remember hearing at a meeting that in some towns, they do look at that, the question of whether the renters are getting the information or just the owners. So, in thinking about how we put out this information, I think we should look at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Hi, my name is Michelle Monbrook Street. I second what this person just said. As a class action lawsuit I sit on with the Disability Law Center against the State of Massachusetts in Mass. Health, you are required to provide all public information in every medium possible. That is not just on your website, in a handout. You need to provide audio, tactile, and visual. There are people here who are blind today, and someone said regarding another warrant that it's in the warrant, they can see it there. Guess what? There are at least two people here who cannot see it at all. So, as a renter, I guarantee you, I'm not receiving that information in the mail, I'm not receiving it at my door unless I'm printing it out. My neighbor downstairs will never touch a computer. He is adverse to any kind of technology that's not a pen, paper, ruler, and pencil. Why? I don't know, but it's not my business. He's also over 65. I was a home health aide. I work in all these dwellings that you're talking about, Strawberry Hill Apartment Buildings, Acton Townhomes, Spring Hill, Coach Estates. We've had the affordable housing, and Acton is not maintaining it. You can build all the dwellings you want to attach to private homeownership, but you're not dealing with the ones that are out there now.
We are talking about the legal notices.
So, as the legal notices are tenants' right as well. And I hope to see that at my apartment building, 53 Brook Street, Apartment 45. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone four.
The previous question.
There is a motion to move the previous question. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This requires a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. Thank you. Motion passes.
Did we just vote on moving the question?
I was ahead of myself. That was the motion to cut off debate, which clearly did pass by the two-thirds. Now, there is the vote to, for the Home Rule Petition on Legal Notice of Media Requirements. That requires a majority. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion clearly carries. Article 48, Amend the General Bylaws, Polystyrene and Disposable Plastic Reduction. Ms. Nagaretti moves that the town amend the general bylaws as set forth in the article. Does require a two-thirds majority to pass. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, and the presenters are making their way forward. Ms. Tripp, to your article.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Carolyn Tripp of 298 Old High Street. Article 48 asks the town of Acton to take two significant steps to reduce plastic pollution and litter. The first one is to ban all polystyrene products, the use, sale, and distribution of polystyrene within the town, and the second to ban disposable plastics, straws, stirs, splashsticks, and chopsticks, which in this bylaw are called utensils. It seems that not a day goes by that we don't hear some article, some new bit of bad news about the problems created by the great volume of plastic that Americans buy in this country and then just throw away. Polystyrene is among the nastiest of these plastics for a variety of reasons. It uses in its manufacture two chemicals, one of which styrene is, benzene is a known carcinogen, and styrene is, has been labeled as probable carcinogen by the World Health Organization. It never goes away. Most of it's not recyclable. And when it breaks down in fragments, and it's very breakable, in the marine environment, then it produces these microplastics, which are ingested by marine animals who die of starvation. And ultimately, these microplastics now find their way into the human food chain, and scientists begin to tell us that they're discovering them in our bloodstreams and our organs. And if that weren't enough, this last small set of souvenirs from a walk in my neighborhood on Earth Day weekend illustrates the grim problem of litter that we face in this town. So, going forward, this Article 48 would ask, would require food establishments to stop using all polystyrene food service ware. That includes both solid forms and foam forms, and all polystyrene cutlery, knives, forks, and spoons, starting January 1st, 2023. Food establishments would also have to stop providing plastic straws, stirs, splashsticks, and chopsticks. Instead, what they would need to do is to substitute their choice, the bylaw does not specify what they substitute, from a range of workable alternatives. And years ago, we probably wouldn't have said there were so many workable alternatives. The interesting thing now is, there are six states with more joining, including places like New York and New Jersey and our neighbors Vermont and Maine, where polystyrene is banned entirely. So distributors have become much better at providing a wide range of alternatives, and you can see some of these on the screen. They would also have to look at finding non-plastic utensils. So, we could still get a straw if we asked for it, or we could still get a splashstick or stirrer or chopsticks if we asked for it, or we served ourselves from a self-service dispenser. Retailers would have to stop selling polystyrene products, all, some of which look very familiar to us when you, when you see these brands on the screen. Anything labeled with the resin code 6, or anything labeled with a PS. And they'd have to stop selling unencapsulated foam products. So anything that wasn't sheathed, and we're familiar with some of these, these plastic floats, the pool noodles, and the coolers, et cetera. Retailers would need to offer consumers alternatives if they're going to sell disposable plastic utensils. And you see, this is in a local grocery store, the alternatives have to be nearby, clearly labeled, readily accessible, so the consumers can make a choice between what they're, among what they're going to buy. Many of us are concerned about the foam trays that meat and products come in sometimes. The ban doesn't apply to food that is prepared outside of Acton and shipped in, or eggs in foam cartons. And it doesn't apply to anything that we receive that's been packed outside of Acton in polystyrene and isn't going to be repacked in the town. Now, we're aware that there are a number of potential impacts to businesses in the town. We went around to 54 businesses in Acton in preparation to bring this to town meeting, talked to them, left them with information. We're deeply impressed by the choices people have already made. As you can see on the screen, a fair number of businesses have already said, we don't use polystyrene at all. Interesting enough, a number of the middle groups said, yeah, we don't use much, but we use, we need to help in finding an alternative straw or a different hot cup. We are committed to working with the Board of Health, which is the enforcing agency for this bylaw, and with the Sustainability Office, and doing whatever we can to provide information about alternatives and to celebrate and cheer on these businesses as they make their choices. The Board of Health has the opportunity to provide extensions and to slow the implementation if a restaurant needs it and applies. So finally, that old philosopher Pogo probably summed it up. We do have some responsibility for the plastics in that pile, but the nice thing is, we have an opportunity to do something tonight about that, and we hope that you will take that opportunity and support Article 48. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Board recommendation?
Thank you. Given the environmental and health impacts of polystyrene and disposable plastics, Acton's commitment to sustainability, the success other towns in Massachusetts have had in reducing polystyrene and single-use plastic with similar models, and the careful thought given to working alongside stakeholders in town government and the community to ensure fiscal impact will not disproportionately burden our local small businesses, we believe this general bylaw amendment should be passed. The Select Board has voted unanimously to recommend this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
The containers and utensils being considered in this article are known to contribute to plastics pollution in their production, in their whole form, and as they break down. Given the extensive known and unknown costs associated with efforts to filter PFAS out of our water supply, the Finance Committee sees it as long-term fiscal responsibility to get ahead of further plastic pollution to our environment. To that end, we recommend this article.
There is a comment from the Economic Development Committee. You can just go to the mic.
Thank you. My name is Katherine Yusov. I'm a member of the Economic Development Committee and the incoming chair of that committee. And we wanted to just speak to this article, to give local businesses a voice at the town meeting and to advocate for them. The EDC recognizes the value of reducing the use of polystyrene and disposable plastics and fully supports the intent of the proposed bylaw. However, consistent with the committee's charge to support businesses, we are recommending a specific amendment and recommendations to enhance the likelihood of a successful implementation, one that achieves the intent while supporting businesses and their customers. For businesses, especially small local businesses that are coming out of the grueling effects of a pandemic, the resulting burden of compliance with the bylaw has not been adequately considered, in our view. The costs associated with finding and purchasing different supplies are not trivial. The prices of compliant products will be significantly higher and likely will be harder to come by. Although businesses can pass some of the costs on to consumers, they will likely not be able to pass all of them on. And the increased retail prices that come from passing the costs on will prove difficult for many Acton residents. Just passing the law and including enforcement as part of the Board of Health's role is not sufficient. To hope to achieve the positive environmental effect, the town must commit to a comprehensive implementation and support plan that includes clear, consistent, and sufficient communication and education to consumers and businesses. To demonstrate the town's support of local business, Acton should provide positive reinforcement along with the legislative requirements. Businesses that meet the deadline and comply with the bylaw should be celebrated and promoted. Therefore, the EDC recommends extending the implementation deadline to July 1st, 2023, and strongly urges the town to commit to a supportive, thorough implementation plan that includes clear, comprehensive education and communication, as well as positive reinforcement.
Thank you. The next speaker at microphone three.
Hi, my name is Michelle Brock. I am all for banning these things, but keep in mind, the straw was developed to help the disabled, not to be a commodity enjoyed by everybody else. And by asking, having somebody ask, may I have a straw where it otherwise would have been given, is asking them to violate their right to privacy, and that is not the position of Acton to take. I should not have to say, I have X disability. I should not have to say, I have X disability, can I please have a straw? It was entitled to me under the law as it was given. So that is what I'm putting out there. If you want to have a replacement for that plastic straw, which I'm all for it, keep in mind that metal, hard plastics, or glass are breakable, and they can also cause people with seizures to bite down and break their teeth. That comes from personal experience. So when you go to start looking at these alternatives, consider the people with disabilities as well as the cost you are passing down from the, to the business that is going to come to us in an already difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Hi, my name is Andy Rikard, 220 Arlington Street. I just wanted to clarify something with regard to the, I believe that compostable drinkware was a viable alternative, but reusable utensils, or sorry, disposable plastic utensils include marine degradable straws, that those would not be allowed either? I just, or compostable straws? I just wanted some clarification on that.
Ms. Tripp?
I, I believe that, are you talking about what retailers can sell, or in, in?
I guess, maybe that's my confusion, I was just looking at the definition for the disposable plastic utensil.
Ask me one more time, so I'm going to answer correctly.
I appreciate all your efforts on this, definitely. I won't, I'm not trying to be confrontational, I'm just trying to understand as an owner of a local business. So the compostable drinkware was acceptable, but under the definition for disposable plastic utensil, a compostable straw or a marine degradable straw is not acceptable, it appears?
Yes, I think that's confusing. That's, that is the definition of a utensil, but under, under, as we understand, regulated conduct, any alternative, disposable utensil that is not plastic is okay. So paper, silicone, it doesn't specify in regu, in regulated conduct that we would not allow any kind of compostable straw.
So?
So they would be okay.
It'd be okay?
They would be okay, yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone four.
I would like to move the question.
There is a motion on the floor to move the previous question.
Second.
And a second. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion clearly carries by the two-thirds. The motion now is to amend general bylaws on polystyrene and plastic reduction. This does require a two-thirds as well. All who are in favor, please. Does it? I am misnoted. It does require a majority. I wrote down two-thirds in my notes. Requires the majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. Is there a vote from the gym area?
Unanimous in favor.
The motion clearly carries. Article 49. Home rule. Is this home, home rule petition? Amendment, yes. We voted the article, there was no amendment. The word amendment was said, but no amendment was made. Article 49. Home rule petition, checkout bag, minimum charge. Ms. Nagaretti moves that the town authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for a home rule act in substantially the form set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Berry, and I will point out, Mr. Berry and I are not related.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Peter Berry. I'm a member of the Ban the Bag Group, and with me, besides Carolyn Tripp, who you just heard from, are Carolyn Platt and Lee Stunts. Like the previous article, this article asks that we take another small step in reducing the overall consequences of a throwaway society. This home rule petition proposes that any business in Acton that provides a disposable checkout bag to a customer must charge a minimum amount for the bag, and it addresses the goals of the Acton Climate Action Plan. We banned plastic checkout bags in 2019, and why this next step? Because we're looking for ways to help all of us make the most environmentally friendly choices when we shop. Places that took only the step of banning plastic bags show that these bans alone do not either capture consumer attention or shift consumer behavior towards sustainability. Bag charges significantly reduce the use of disposable bags, and these are states and cities that have adopted bag charge laws. Why a minimum charge? First, to provide incentives to consumers and encourage conscious choice. When checkout bags seem to be free, there's a long-term cost to the environment and to businesses. Right now, businesses have to absorb costs or pass them along to consumers. These increases are not clearly linked to the cost of bags. We can choose to avoid such costs by bringing our own bags. It's an environmentally friendly procedure. This proposal recognizes there are environmental impacts if we do not take responsibility to curb our rampant use of disposable checkout bags. 14 million trees are cut down every year to make paper bags, affecting wildlife habitats, soil erosion, and air quality. Paper checkout bags are heavier to ship and require more fuel to transport. We want to reduce waste and associated costs. Roughly only 65% of paper bags get recycled, the rest end up in incinerators and waterways or as litter. We want to offset the burden for retailers. The costs have been rising significantly. Retailers feel they have to provide bags. There's little or no incentive to consumers to skip taking a bag entirely or to bring their own. And we want to reduce litter. Things that are free are easily tossed aside, find their way onto road sides, into woods and streams, as this all-too-familiar Acton roadside scene shows. We know to encourage a shift in behavior, a bag cannot simply be free. There must be a charge of some sort that causes consumers to stop and make a choice. The current break-even point for retailers is about 15 cents. The state sales tax would also apply to this bag charge, which is essentially purchasing a bag. That would add another one cent to, to the charge. Grants are available to provide free usable bags for residents who might need assistance, and Ban the Bag is committed to pursuing those grants. This is a list of bags that would not be included. The focus is on large grocery bags. This is a, not a gotcha, it's not a punitive measure. Ban the Bag and others will be partners with the Board of Health to get as much information and support out as we can. The Acton Board of Health will be taking responsibility for monitoring as part of their environmental stewardship. Consumers can bring implementation questions to their attention, and the Board of Health will work with retailers to ensure compliance. It's a win for businesses that get to keep monies collected to offset their costs and it makes a town-wide consistent policy. Right now, some, some merchants do charge for bags and others don't. It's a win for consumers who can choose to spend on disposable checkout bags or not. And it's a win for the environment. Saves lots of paper, that, much of which doesn't get recycled. The most sustainable choice is the bag you already have. So we're asking town meeting to give new meaning to the acronym BYOB. Please support Article 49 and bring your own bag. Thank you.
Thank you. The Select Board Recommendation?
Thank you. The Select Board recognizes the environmental impact of single-use bags and the success other municipalities have seen in single-use bag reduction with the minimum bag surcharge. The minor dissent opinion on this notes that this surcharge could impact the out-of-town customer base for our local businesses. Taken all of this into consideration, in line with our climate action plan, the Select Board has voted 4 to 1 to recommend this article. Thank you.
Thank you. The Finance Committee Recommendation?
The Finance Committee, the Finance Committee originally rejected a plastic bag ban when it was introduced a few years back because evidence showed a plastic bag ban alone contributes to increased environmental pollution in the form of the increased production of paper bags and the cost of their transportation and distribution. We were also concerned that the increased cost of paper bags over plastic would be detrimental to our local businesses. This fee was the missing element in our estimation. Bag fees implemented in other areas produced a change in behavior, leading to people bringing their reusable bags or opting for no bag at all. When people do opt to take a paper bag, the associated fee will go directly to the business owner to offset their costs. For these reasons, we recommend this article.
Thank you. Does the EDC have a comment? At microphone two, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Larry Canah, Betsy Ross Circle, Economic Development Committee. I am representing the EDC, speaking in opposition to Article 49. What problem are we solving? Sometimes silence provides a better answer than, to the question. When did the brown paper grocery bag become a villain? When this town voted to ban plastic grocery bags several years ago, the brown paper grocery bag was the hero, filling the void. In the first year of the COVID pandemic, when reusable grocery bags were not allowed, the brown paper grocery bag again rose to the occasion. But now it is frowned upon. Why? This article was presented to the Select Board by its proponents, asking that the Select Board adopt the article as one of its own instead of being a citizen's petition. At the time of that initial Select Board meeting, most of the conversation centered on plastics, the subject of the previous article. There was no public hearing on this article, one that affects all citizens and all retail businesses in town. When the Select Board voted on this, whether to recommend this article at their meeting on April 25th, the EDC's objections, the slide that you were looking at, were ignored. So why is the EDC opposed to this article? The reason appear on the slide at the front of this room that hopefully you can all read. It is still unclear why we are passing this bylaw. In spite of, or perhaps even because of, the list of exceptions, there is still confusion for businesses and consumers that could lead to inconsistent and unfair application and enforcement. The bag charge must appear on every registry receipt. This might be relatively straightforward for large stores or businesses that are part of a local or national chain, but it is yet another change that small businesses must implement and pay for. The EDC recommends an approach that encourages reusable bags rather than a minimum charge. Let's focus on education and encouragement rather than a legislated charge and strict requirements that will unnecessarily burden businesses, increase costs for consumers who are already suffering as a result of unprecedented inflation. To that end, we encourage all of you to go against this article. In particular, if you do not have a good answer to the question that we started with, what problem are we solving? We especially ask for a no vote on this unnecessary article. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Oh, David Didrikson, 25 Lincoln Drive. I won't say how many years I've lived here, but am I allowed to say that I used to own a business in town for many years?
I think that's fair, yes.
Okay, so I'm against this article because of its impact on especially the small businesses. One size does not fit all. I think this is killing a fly with a shotgun a little bit, because we're going overboard. I think, I understand the concerns, I get it. We don't want to have, you know, too many paper bags out there. Mostly, I think this addresses concerns about supermarkets because that's where the volume is. But in the small businesses, when I owned a business, I certainly didn't want people bringing their own bags, especially at Christmas time, where I had a real problem with security, and that's an issue for a lot of businesses. It's also true that everyone needs bags to, in certain cases, to carry out the things that they buy. And so there's nothing wrong with bags. You can argue whether or not it's sanitary to reuse a bag over and over without cleaning it a lot, or whether it's better to use paper bags. I'm not here to talk about that. I, I'm talking about the, the burden it's going to place on small businesses. It seems trivial, it's 15 cents, but that means that somebody's got to stop every time, and you've got all these exceptions here, you've got a page and a half of exceptions. Someone's got to figure out, wait a minute, does that, do I charge for that one, or do if I double bag it, is that 30 cents? Is it, you know, it's, in a supermarket, they can probably handle it because of the volume, and they've got operations, they can go through things. Small stores, you know, if you're going in to buy one little thing, I mean, now I'm going to have to charge, wait, I have to charge you 15 cents? Some of those stores actually write things by hand. I mean, you're going to write in 15 cents for every bag? I would be, I would be more in favor of this if it were just supermarkets, but it's every single merchant in town is going to be affected in some way. And all of your exceptions, you just, it's a lot of hassle. Let me tell you, it's tough to be a business today, a small business, especially a retail business in Acton or anyplace else. Adding to their burden with all the other stuff they've had to go through in the last few years is not going to encourage businesses in town. So I, truth and transparency, I'm also on the EDC. This is not really good for the small businesses, so I would urge you to vote against it.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Hi, my name is Christopher Lopez, Central Street, and I'm also a member of Housing and Climate Justice for Acton, and we would like to endorse this article and vote for everyone to, not vote, but encourage everyone to vote aye on this, for the reasons of a greener future. I know it's definitely, it's a difficult decision when coming to terms to what we need to do for this, and I think this is one of our steps forward. It's definitely something that encourages a better future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, from the gym?
Oh, yes.
We're excited we have a speaker here.
Alrighty, yes, from the gym.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. David Huffman, 3 Half Moon Hill. And I confess that I'm one of the people here in the town of Acton, probably elsewhere, who continually leaves my grocery bags in the car. I forget. And I'm embarrassed to say that I think a 15-cent charge would probably serve as a useful reminder. I'm embarrassed to say it because I don't think my environmental conscience, conscience should be, depend on a 15-cent charge. But I, I think that study of human nature suggests that we are influenced by some very small things, like this one. And I think the impact of passing this and falling in line with some other towns that have done it successfully will have two very beneficial effects for the town of Acton and for the world. One is, it will materially reduce waste. Second, it will increase awareness of the huge job that we have to clean up our environment, to reduce the resources that we use unnecessarily, and, and makes a moral statement that I think speaks loudly to our children. They're watching. I think we should pass this.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Hi, my name is Susan Jake, I'm from Half Moon Hill. I'm also a co-president of Green Acton, and speaking on behalf of the directors of Green Acton, we support this bill and urge you to do so also.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
The question?
There is a motion to cut off debate. Is there a second?
Second.
All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. That is clearly two-thirds of the group. We will cut off debate and move to vote to amend the general bylaws, checkout bag, minimum charge. This does require a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion clearly passes. How did it go in the gym?
It was substantially in favor, more than a maj, more than a majority.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to a group of non-binding resolutions. And so that more people may participate more easily, we will limit speakers from the floor to one minute. The presenters still will have five minutes to present, but if you have comments, we will limit that to one. So, the motion is... one. So, the motion is, non-binding resolution, Woodlawn Mortuary Chapel. Ms. Clower moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Clower, to your article.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Amber Clower, 70 Piper Road in Acton. My family, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to give a number. The Heywoods were related to just about everybody 260 years ago. One of these families were the Tuttle's. As I stated in the petition, the mortuary chapel is a memorial given by Vanum Tuttle's daughters. Vanum was a highly successful and respected merchant, and one of the owners of Exchange Hall in South Acton. The purpose of this article is to prohibit future unnecessary invasive alterations to the memorial. Let's continue to keep this monument sacred and respect the honor of Vanum Tuttle. My husband, Bill, 70 Piper Road also, will explain some of the formal procedures.
Thank you. After some years, the Tuttle's daughters decided to build a mortuary chapel in memory of their father, and also for the use of the townspeople. They had purchased a woodlot on Concord Road, and in 1936, gifted the woodlot to the town to be used for cemetery purposes, including the rite of burials. Which is rather important in Massachusetts, because the town meeting has to accept that condition when they get a piece of land to use it for burial purposes. Following that, they voted two motions. The first was to move forward with the cemetery commissioners, getting confused here now, with the cemetery commissioners, to take over the process, build the chapel, and present it to the town. Also, to work with the Tuttle daughters, and to complete the thing, and then accept it one more time for presentation. The chapel was completed by 1938. There was a little bit of a holdup at the time, because this was during the Depression years. Materials were not readily available, and the intricate, beautiful old pipe organ in there took a little extra time. So, during the summer of 38, it was dedicated.
Okay. I'm sorry, how do we?
The big green button.
The green button.
Kind of point it, yep, there you go.
There you go. The building was dedicated. At the time of dedication, it was offered to the residents of Acton for the free use of burial rights, and also for the use by all who wanted to be buried in Woodlawn Chapel. So, it has continued, it was a very special gift at that point in time. Following the dedication, in September, there was a hurricane that took down a good deal of the woodlot around it, and the chapel was spared. In the cleanup operation, Mrs. Watson managed to pay for the whole thing. She and her sisters continued the use of the chapel, free to the public, and I do not know if, outside of using the building for any other purposes, that there has ever been charges. The, when she passed away in 1956, a trust fund was established. It continued to pay for the, all of the repairs and the perfect maintenance of the chapel. That's it.
All right. Select Board recommendation?
Thank you. This is a bit of a speech. Our Select Board appreciates the historical and cultural significance of the Woodlawn Cemetery Chapel, and we recognize that the proposed non-binding resolution does align in some ways with the original chapel restoration project that members of our town have been working on for close to the past decade. Speaking for myself as a Select Board liaison to the Cemetery Commission, I have heard the perspectives of our town staff and Cemetery Commissioners, and have visited the cemetery chapel, and have walked through the space. It's a special building, and we are all grateful for the continued town interest in preserving this building and making it accessible for all. Ultimately, we've heard several perspectives, that are very valid. Some Commissioners have felt that there were limited opportunities to provide feedback and direction to town staff in the design phase of the project. Others felt that there was enough opportunity, and some town staff have mentioned that the Cemetery Commission was involved from the start of the project, but the project had started years back, and the Cemetery Commission had undergone several iterations of its membership since. Some have felt that the proposed changes to the chapel were invasive alterations, and others have felt that the proposed changes to come out of the design study were non-invasive and appropriate for preserving the main historical features while making the space accessible. Some have felt that allowing for the town to charge for services in the chapel, such as weddings, goes against the wishes of the original bestowers of the land to the town. And others have felt that such services would bring revenue that could maintain the chapel in a more sustainable way, and help the town invest in subsequent phases of the restoration plan. In the interest of letting you, our townsfolk, guide our planning decisions in the historical preservation and accessibility of the Woodlawn Cemetery Chapel, the Select Board has voted unanimously to submit no recommendation and remain neutral for this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The genesis of this article was a CPC request that had subsequently been pulled from consideration, but it has brought to attention the contundrum of the Woodlawn Chapel. The building, which long predates the Americans with Disabilities Act, has been closed pending appropriate changes to make it ADA compliant. Some of the changes that have been proposed by the town at the time of ADA retrofitting are seen by the descendants of the donors to be beyond what is required by ADA, and would change the character and intent of the chapel. It is in the interest of the citizens to have this public building opened up in a timely manner, compliant with ADA requirements. It is also in the public's interest to respect the wishes of the people and descendants who gave the land, building, and a maintenance trust for this chapel, lest there be no incentive for other civic-minded philanthropy. The good news is, from what we can determine, the two sides are not that far apart at all. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend this article, and we ask both sides to come to the lowest common denominator to enable the building to be open and accessible to the public, while honoring the original intent.
Thank you. I see at least one person at microphone three. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate everything that the Clowers have done for this town. The chapel is unique. It's another one of Acton's features, invaluable, not replaceable. I think we should respect their wishes entirely, and I urge you to unanimously vote for this resolution.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Hi, Franny Osman, Half Moon Hill. I have a question. Can I ask?
You may ask.
A question of them?
Yes.
First, I just want to say that I, so, I love having the history. I love that you've been telling us about the history, and the history of the family giving it, and the history of the '30s, which I heard, because I happen to be on the Cemetery Commission, but I was very interested in it. But having taken the tour of the beautiful building, and seeing what was planned, and reading this, and I see that this says it's in favor of the accessible bathroom, and it's in favor of the physical changes. The only other things I remember learning about were some acoustical or lighting changes. But so, but I didn't think you were just referring to that in here. So can you say what, what things it is that are called unnecessary invasive alterations? What are those?
Yes, you may, you may answer the question.
Thank you. The project that was proposed to us was to put air conditioning in the building. I have never seen go over 80 degrees. It's always on the cold side, and does need heat, but they were putting in cable TV, a whole bunch of different things that I thought was absolutely ridiculous. And, I mean, the panels are one thing, the glass doors in the front, quite another, but I do think that would go a long way to ruin what the family had envisioned.
Thank you.
If I could, let me say one more thing. Having access is vital. Of course it's vital. Both Billy and I have, Billy had a mother who was very seriously ill, and needed, was handicapped. And, and I was a nurse for 43 years, and I took care of many handicapped people, and that is vital. But making ramps, having ramps, having toilets, that's fine, but let's respect the interior for what the family wanted. I think we really need to do that. And if people want to get married, that's fine, but leave it alone. Just respect the interior.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Yes. So, Bill and I have some disagreement about Asa Parlin, because I feel like that's a sanctuary, but that aside, when I was called to the chapel, by these guys actually, and I listened to what Franny wanted to do, and I was thinking, poetry readings, festivals, that sounds like a blast. And then these guys got hold of me. They walked me through, and they drew me back down into solemn. And I, what he said, unanimously, let's vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Lisa Franklin, Windsor Avenue. I just wanted to point out that you said the purpose was for all people in town, and without access, you are eliminating quite a lot of us. And many years before my disability, I did attend a wedding in that chapel, and it is beautiful, and I would not be able to participate in such a ceremony today. And I guess I would like to consider or propose that maybe we could just, since this is non-binding anyway, maybe we can shift this to make it ADA compliant, or actually, it wouldn't be ADA, it would be AAB compliant, if we could just make it meet current regulations for public space. And then you wouldn't have to deal with air conditioning and other things that you are not happy with, but it would still open it up so that it is truly something the entire town can take advantage of.
Thank you. See someone making the dash? Oh, a remote, okay, to the remote microphone?
Hi, this is Dana Snyder-Grant, Half Moon Hill. I'm also a member of the Cemetery Commission, and the Commission has been looking into how to adapt the chapel to make some appropriate changes, and good changes, how to make it accessible, how to keep it historically appropriate, and in keeping with what the Tuttle's requested. And I feel very, very strongly that we need to move forward with this. And I don't want to see us have a non-binding resolution that would put, make it difficult to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
I just want to remind you that not all disabilities are physical. As a wheelchair walker, or keen, it's sensory. And there are children out there with the alarming number of autistic kids, and adults growing up that would not be able to go in if it's too hot or too cold, the lights are too bright or too dim, or they blink. So when the founders of this estate made it so, they were not envisioning the type of disabilities we have today. And to consider them as a former educator, somebody who works with the elderly, they need consideration too. Land is great, but people are more. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no others, ready to speak, we will vote. This is the non-binding resolution, Woodlawn Mortuary Chapel, requires a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. What is our count in the gym?
It's unanimously in favor.
Very good. The motion does carry.
Thank you, everyone.
Article 51, Non-Binding Resolution, Electric Vehicle Charging for Residents of Multifamily Housing. Mr. Van Meter moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? Mr. Van Meter, to your article.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Bob Van Meter, Half Moon Hill in West Acton. I'm here to speak for Housing and Climate Justice for Acton, in support of Article 51, Electric Vehicle Charging for All, along with my colleague, Ms. Madeline Cruz, who will continue our presentation.
Good evening, Madeline Cruz. You may ask yourself, why electric cars matter to me? It's simple. It's a, it matters to me because as an asthmatic, and having a child who has severe asthma, it is important to have more EV vehicles than gas cars that we all know contribute to air pollution. Why EV charging matters for Acton? Without the ability to charge conveniently and affordably at home, it is difficult to own an AV. Gas-powered vehicles contribute nearly half of Acton's total greenhouse gas emission. About 30% of Acton's residents live in apartment and condos. Most of us own at least one car per household. We cannot switch to EVs until chargers are installed.
Continuing on this why EV charging matters for Acton, electric vehicles are becoming more affordable. There are tax credits and subsidies, and we expect these to increase in the future.
Benefits of Expanding Electric Cars Charging in Acton. Accelerate EV adoption, reduce pollution, and help negative health impacts. Make Acton appealing to new residents, home buyers, and businesses. Allow residents to take advantage of EV incentives, tax rebate, and trade-in programs.
Now we want to address some myths, and counter them with some facts.
Can you get closer to the mic? I don't think you're getting picked up.
One myth is that there's no need for special Level 2 chargers, because renters and condominium owners can just run an extension cord out of their homes and charge their car. The fact is that with a normal house electric outlet, it would take 40 or more hours to charge an electric vehicle. Acton's average commute is 36 minutes each way. This means folks are driving 25 to 60 miles a day or more. Myth number two, just use a public charger. The fact is that fully charging, even at a Level 2 charger, could take nine hours or more. And there are not that many public chargers in Acton right now. Finally, some folks think you only need to charge your car once a week. In fact, cold winters and long commutes mean that frequent, more frequent charging is often necessary.
Without your vote, one-third of Acton residents will be shut out. Climate solutions require town coordination. Most condo owner, condo residents and renters do not currently have the ability to get an apartment complex-sized charging station, installed even if they are willing to pay. Grant funding that the town has access to, and coordination from town staff can make a huge difference.
What would the article do? This is a referendum to see if town meeting voters want the Select Board to help apartment and condo dwellers get charging stations. and condo dwellers get charging stations in their buildings and future residents of multifamily buildings get electric vehicle charging. This article, if passed, will not change the law. It will not require condominiums to install chargers, but it is a way to help the town meet its climate goals, to create cleaner air, and to become more equitable.
Thirty percent of Acton households are condo owners and residents and renters. We want and need to be part of Acton's green future. Please remember, this is a great way to help the town meet its climate goals and make it greener. Thank you.
Thank you. The Select Board recommendation?
The Select Board agrees with this analysis that, that multifamily housing is an important place for charging stations and that the town should seek additional outside funding to encourage this in existing multifamily housing. And we should research what bylaws or zoning changes can bring more car charging capability to new multifamily housing. The Board was unanimously in support of this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you. The Finance Committee, even though this is a non-binding resolution, voted to not recommend the article primarily for the wording in Part Two whereby the town would be responsible for administering grants, searching for grants, and also putting up public funds to put EV charging stations on private property.
Thank you. Town meeting members, speaker at microphone three?
Yes, Denise Conley, Brewster Lane. I'm a condo owner with a small EV that I'm currently prohibited from charging in my garage. And because I'm not allowed to charge at home or overnight, living in Acton with a smaller, more affordable EV has been challenging at best, daunting in winter when my battery range drops thirty to forty percent in cold temperatures. So at this point, my only option may be to move to another residence, which may mean leaving Acton altogether. I therefore strongly support this article for all current and future residents who want to own and drive EVs and support the town's climate action plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one?
Carolyn Palat, Newtown Road. I want to thank you for giving a voice to apartment and condo dwellers. A third of Acton residents deserve access to EV chargers and to be a part of Acton's healthy future. So thank you, and let's go for it.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four?
Call the previous question.
There is a motion to move the previous question. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All who are in favor of cutting off debate on this item, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion clearly carries by the two-thirds. We'll now vote. This does require a majority to pass. All who are in favor of the article, electrical, electric vehicle charging for residents of multifamily housing, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Gym, required, the gym count?
Passed substantially, if not unanimously.
Very good. The motion clearly carries. Article fifty-two, economic feasibility analysis of affordable housing trusts. Ms. Friedrichs moves that the town transfer from free cash and appropriate $2,500 to be expended by the town manager for the purposes set forth in the article. Ms. Nichol and Mr. Cadlock, to the article.
Alyssa Nichol, School Street. Article fifty-two seeks funding for a feasibility study. Residents have been working to create and communicate a plan for a rehab trust to preserve existing naturally affordable housing in Acton. We presented our proposal to the Acton Community Housing Corporation, or ACHC, and Housing for All. We also met with the Acton Housing Authority, or AHA, director, who shared data on the AHA program's operation with us. The feedback suggests that the most important next step would be to implement the feasibility work proposed in the Town of Acton 2020 Housing Production Plan. And that brings us to town meeting today. This article asks town meeting to fund a feasibility study to vet the creation of a housing trust. If this analysis confirms that such a rehab trust is economically feasible, then the establishment of a trust would be brought to a future town meeting. Mr. Cadlock?
While this article funds only the feasibility analysis and not the creation of a trust, it is important to explain what is a housing trust. Housing trusts typically operate as a funding entity or as an active initiator of projects, and sometimes both. Using the borrowed, the borrowing power of the town and/or funding from the state, the trust could purchase naturally affordable units, such as condos, when they are put on the market. After rehabbing those units, meeting the requirements of the state for inclusion in a subsidized housing inventory, the trust would indeed restrict them to remain affordable forever and either rent or sell them to income-qualified households. A housing trust focused solely on rehab would complement the efforts of the AHA and the ACHC. There would be some overlap and mutual support, as happens now, when those entities, with those entities. Thank you.
Why rehab and why now? The 2020 Housing Production Plan's number one goal calls for a focus on rehabbing existing naturally affordable units and deed restricting them. The plan calls for a study to consider establishing and funding a program to acquire condominiums and apartment buildings to create affordable rental units. Our proposed feasibility study could satisfy this strategy. One of the Select Board's short-term goals last year was to consider creating a rehab housing trust. We need to act now to be in a position to purchase units as they become available and while they are still affordable. In 2018, the Regional Housing Services Office analysis showed an average of forty units per year are sold in Acton for under $200,000. New building projects that are heavily subsidized can take years to make it through funding cycle and permitting processes, and the cost per new unit is high. Rehab can be quicker and less expensive than building new. And finally, Acton's Climate Emergency Declaration and the Climate Action Plan call for the reuse of existing buildings. Rehab would improve the energy efficiency of older units. The greenest building is the one that is already built. New construction generates significant greenhouse gas emissions and puts a strain on natural resources. Even when new buildings are more energy efficient, it takes decades to overcome the negative impacts of new construction. The requested funding provides for a professional assessment of the economic feasibility of a trust that can purchase, rehab, and deed restrict units. This article has been recommended or endorsed unanimously by the Select Board, Acton Community Housing Corporation, Acton Housing Authority, Housing for All, Green Acton, and the Finance Committee. We urge you to join all of us in support of this article. Let's move forward on Acton's goal to provide more affordable and sustainable housing options. Thank you.
Thank you. The Select Board recommendation?
Madam Moderator, the Select Board unanimously voted to recommend this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you. The Finance Committee did the same, unanimously recommended.
All right. Town meeting members? Microphone one?
This is perhaps a silly question, but as someone who's done a lot of consulting over the years, $2,500 can't buy squat. So what are we actually voting on here that can't be done by a, by a town staff member with appropriate qualifications?
Ms. Nichol?
Thank you very much for that question. This estimate came from a consultant who does this analysis of these kinds of trusts. I also have the same question. Why hasn't the town staff already done this themselves? Because this was a short-term Select Board goal that was established last July. So I hope that town meeting helps us with a nudge to get this going.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three?
Yes, I'm very strong supporter of this. The BRA has already shown us this, this can be done. And again, for the elderly, they're growing in number, and the best thing to do is to rehab these for all levels of accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker at microphone three?
Just to note that the analysis is practically all done from various pieces, and so the consultant has just talked about putting it all together and putting a stamp on approval, you know, somebody that does this professionally. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, at microphone three?
Hi, Christopher Central Street. So as a renter in Acton, I definitely am pretty supportive for this. This is sounding like it's keeping the properties in town kind of close to our home and keeping those who manage them close to here. Because I know personally, my property is managed by a company out of state, and that we've run through a lot of issues because of that. So if this is kind of suggesting that we are going to be keeping it more to town or more closer to that, then I'm very much supportive. So I guess that's also a question. Is that what this is kind of moving towards?
Ms. Nichol?
So yes, in, in the event that a condo or an apartment were put on the market and the town had a trust that was able to purchase it, then we would own it.
Thank you.
Or, or sell it. Yes, to an income-qualified household, but in Acton, obviously, because that's where the home is.
Thank you. Microphone four?
I thought this was supposed to be a feasibility study. According to what was just said, all the pieces are all together and it's already a done fact from what Mrs. Friedrichs just said. I don't understand how you can use $2,500 for something that's already been, and when, and the other question is, if in fact, this goes a, you know, you have this information gathered, how many public hearings are you intending to have so we can see what the impact will be?
Can I answer that?
Mr. Cadlock?
The reason it's $2,500, because a lot of this has already been done, but we need this first step. $2,500, we just got a good deal. It happens, you know? Yes, yes, there will be hearings. This is just a very small first step, but an important one. I've been involved in this thing for probably what, ten, how many years? Ten years? I was young then. And, and nothing's ever happened. So this is a way to get this thing underway, get some information that perhaps we don't have, somebody who has done these before is volunteering to help out. It's not a, you know, it's not a big deal to vote for this, and nothing's going to happen until a lot more things have to be put in place, including in the legalities of all of this. There's a lot more to do. This is just a start, but we need a start.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three?
Madeline Cruz, Townhouse Lane. I just want to say that I support this article for the reason that as a renter in Acton, having the difficulties that I've had with my landlord currently, it makes it very difficult for me to find an apartment that is feasible for our income. Having a family of five with an income of just $42,000 a year is simply not enough, and it makes it impossible to avoid having dilemmas with my current landlord and not being able to find affordable apartments in Acton for many reasons. And I think that this would support not just my family, but other families like me that struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone four?
I would like to move the question, please.
There's a motion on the floor to move the previous question. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, say nay. Debate is cut off. The motion is on the economic feasibility analysis of affordable housing trust, requires a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
In the gym?
Unanimously in favor?
The motion, the motion clearly passes. Thank you. protecting Acton's potable water. Ms. Friedrichs moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Friedrichs, to your article.
Yes, just, Miss Moderator, I noticed that there's a camera with a long-range lens, and I'd like the respect of not having close-up film on me connected to Facebook and social media, et cetera. Is it possible to restrict the use of cameras with long-range lenses?
That helps allow the people in the other room to see you.
Oh, I'm not talking about that one. I'm talking about the, another private one that's being, that I'm not sure exactly where it's going.
If someone is photographing the speaker, could they please not? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so, yes, this article asks you to vote yes to declare that protecting Acton's potable water should be a higher priority than promoting or encouraging additional water uses. The question is yes or no. Do we believe that protecting Acton's drinking water should be a higher priority than promoting and/or encouraging additional water uses? The answer seems obvious, doesn't it? Why would anyone think that drinking water is less important than, well, just about anything? Why would town officials permit land uses which jeopardize our drinking water? I'm not here to tell you if they would or they wouldn't. I'm here because sometimes it's important for a governing body to set priorities so that competing interests in the town understand the priorities. I'm here because I go to a lot of meetings, and I'm concerned that different departments, committees, and other organizational silos may not be paying enough attention to the impact their actions or inactions have on water. I'm here because they may not be considering water enough in permitting, rezoning, and other actions. I'm concerned that facilitating different uses of land can negatively impact drinking water. I'm here because I'm concerned that protecting drinking water hasn't been prioritized over other projects like helping developers and others expand the amount of water being used. We know water is limited, both in what the aquifer can safely yield and what the pumps can safely pump. But the decision today isn't about quantity. The decision today is whether we want to let officials know that when we want, that we want them to make sure to prioritize the protection of drinking water over other town goals like intensifying land uses by developers. The decision today is whether keeping your drinking water safe is more important than just about any other goal relative to water. As a reminder, this is a non-binding article. If passed, it does not change law. A yes vote would send a message that you want protecting your drinking water to be a higher priority than helping developers. If this passes, it will serve as a reminder that town meeting wants officials to prioritize the protection of drinking water. The Acton Finance Committee, the Water Resources Advisory Committee, and the Acton Water District have all voted to support this article. Join me and others in sending the message that more should be invested in protecting Acton's drinking water. Please vote yes to make our priorities clear. Protect Acton's drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Board recommendation?
In our discussions, all, all Board members felt that it was important to protect potable water. However, some pointed out that there was no link between usage and protecting our water. In the end, the Select Board voted not to make any recommendation on this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted to recommend this article.
Thank you. Town meeting members?
Speaker at microphone four? Bob Van Meter, Half Moon Hill. I'm speaking on behalf of Acton Housing for All. We voted against this article. We, we view this article as providing a tool for opponents to development to kind of claim the legitimacy- to kind of claim the legitimacy of the town meeting in attacking development proposals as somehow threatening potable water. So we would urge that town meeting vote against this article.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one?
Hello, Erica Amir Lynn, 534 Old Stone Brook. I'm speaking as my capacity as an Acton Water Commissioner. The mission of the Acton Water District is to provide potable water in sufficient quantity to support the community, sustain public health, and provide fire protection through the district's entire service area. To achieve our mission meeting the water demand and water quality desired by the people of Acton, a joint responsibility between the town and the district is required. Decisions made by the Select Board, town committees, and town staff have a direct impact on the district's operations and decision-making. As such, issues involving zoning, land use, infrastructure, and redevelopment should be inclusive of protecting and enhancing the water infrastructure and resources we maintain. The Commissioners of the Acton Water District support the recognition and protection of our local water resources as expressed in this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two?
It's hard to be against water and potable water, but I don't think this is the way to do it. I think we need some more specific ideas. This seems to be something which could be very easily used to just eliminate development of housing that we do need to address the issues of our town, affordable housing of our state. And I think that a more thought-out and specific proposal would be more appropriate. So I intend to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three?
Thank you, Alyssa Nichol, School Street. I am in support of this article. I'm not sure that I can add anything additional that the Acton Water District Commissioner already said. I don't see this as a tool to be successful in opposing development projects in general because I can tell you that over the last several years, when climate emergency declaration has been brought up, it hasn't changed the permitting by the Planning Board or the Zoning Board or the Select Board. However, I am voting for this because I see this as setting a priority, which is more important when two things are in conflict and only then. So if something, whether a zoning change or a project, would threaten the quality or quantity of Acton's water, then it's good for our officials and town staff to recognize that water protection is a higher priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone two?
Lauren Rosenzweig Morton, 26th Marshall Path. I also was 10 years on the Planning Board and six years as select person on the Select Board. All town planning requires balance and balancing lots of different priorities. I believe that the town and the Water District work very, very closely together with all the other entities in town to make sure that our drinking water is as clean as possible and as least impacted as possible. But you really have to look at the balance. It's not simple and it's very complex, but I do agree, I think everybody here agrees, that protecting our water and making it healthy and clean for drinking is a high priority. And I believe that the town officials feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two?
David Martin, High Street. This article sets up a false choice. Additional water uses don't affect water quality. New water uses are part of a vibrant community. New businesses that fill our empty storefronts like restaurants and gyms require more water than the retail stores that used to be there. Overall, though, we don't even have increasing water use. In the past half a dozen years or so, water use has fallen by 15%, even though there have been new homes and businesses. This article makes no attempt to coordinate between the town and the Water District, which is responsible for our water quality. The A W D is working on our biggest water quality issue, which is PFAS, which this article ignores.
Thank you. Seeing no others standing, we will vote. This requires a majority to pass. All who are, protecting Acton's potable water. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The article fails. We could have a clicker vote? Okay, you may turn on the clickers. Sync the clickers. Voting is open. Press A for yes, C to abstain, E for no. Any clicker troubles out there? All right, voting is closed. Maybe we should have started a serial at the start of this meeting so that during every break, we could have another chapter. I just thought of that. That, oh, maybe next year. The article does fail. Article 54, Non-Binding Resolution, Land and Tree Clearing Limits Bylaws. Ms. Fredericks moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded to the article. And please introduce yourself.
My name is Richard Kelleher. I live at 46 Acton, 46 Audubon, 46 Bristol Lane at Audubon Hill, and I'm an architect. Growing up, I thought that how wonderful trees were. I had lived in a yard with a lot of trees and I thought how wonderfully they produced oxygen for us to breathe. But now I realize how much more important it is that they store large amounts of carbon and save us from climate change and immense amounts, especially large mature trees. So this article is a non-binding resolution for land tree clearing limits. State law allows town meeting to enact limits on land and/or tree clearing. In bringing such bylaws forward, the Select Board should consider impacts to equity, climate, and water protection. The tree and land clearing can be devastating to the environment and to our neighbors. Trees protect our air by both storing carbon and generating oxygen, protect our water by helping to recharge aquifers, filter toxins, and reduce runoff into rivers. And trees, as we now know, contribute to mental health. There is a concern that there is too much clearcutting. This article seeks to ask the Select Board whether to do something about it. Here is a picture taken a couple of weeks ago of the type of clearcutting that we seek to prevent. This is the 5 Fletcher Court site in Acton on Main Street. With land and/or tree clearing limits, the damage would have been much less. If passed, this article would call for the Select Board to help prepare a warrant article which, if passed, would enact tree and/or land clearing limits in Acton. Green Acton has endorsed this article and Green Acton volunteers plan to help find consensus on a potential land clearing limits bylaw. But the volunteers don't have the professional skills to draft such a warrant article, so we need the Select Board to authorize town staff to help construct it. We will then modify the language of the draft article until there's enough consensus to bring it to town meeting. It's easy to understand why limiting land and tree clearing is good for the environment. It's more complicated to understand why it's fiscally prudent. Trees add value to the community. Limiting unaffordable building helps reduce pressure on the town's budget. It helps protect against negative neighborhood income, value impacts, and it helps reduce physical and mental health costs. Just ask the neighbors who live next door to clearcut land. There are various ways to do this. One is to place a limit as to the percentage of the land that can be cleared. Another is to create a buffer or a tree yard around the edges of the property where clearing is not allowed. A third is to require a tree-by-tree removal permit for each mature tree. The list goes on. The first method, perhaps the simplest, is to limit the percentage of land that can be cleared. The developer would choose which part of the land. Another method like that enacted and conquered is to enact a buffer around the property where tree clearing is banned. There is a long list of methods, seemingly a different one for each town we looked at. If you, I'll leave you with a partial list of the benefits. We could have listed more if we had more time. We encourage you to visit with a group who wants to enact tree and land clearing limits to learn more. As a reminder, this article is non-binding. If passed, it will not change the law. A yes vote would ask the Select Board to repair an article for the next town meeting to vote on. The Acton Select Board, the Acton Finance Committee, and the Acton Design Review Board, and Green Acton all recommend this article. I urge you to join them and vote yes to ask the Select Board to help bring land clearing limits to the next town meeting for you to vote on. Vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Board recommendation?
This article is general and offers several alternatives for us to investigate. The Select Board voted to recommend this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee also recommended this article.
Town meeting members? Microphone two?
Phoebe Conant, Nagog Hill Road. I'm not against this article. I just wanted to raise a few things if it does go forward and the town has to think about it. As someone who's had my land under forestry for decades, I can tell you that forestry planning is a very complex thing. It's not about clearcutting and not clearcutting. It's about managing forests and keeping them healthy. One thing we should all keep in mind is that the natural state of this area is to revert to forest. So things tend to grow up. If you look at pictures of Acton in the olden days where it was all farmland, it's all woods now and that just happens naturally. It naturally reforests. That's not to say that that's a bad thing or a good thing, but I also just wanted to give as an example, when we built our home, we had cleared for our septic system and then we thought about widening up the, we wanted to plant a meadow. And so I talked to the tree commissioner, said, well, there's, you know, no reason on the books that you can't do that. But I went and talked to Fish and Wildlife and I said, you know, what do you think about this idea? And they said, the problem right now is from a habitat perspective, fields are the most depleted habitat we have. And so he was all in favor of having, because there are a number of species and birds that don't have that available to them anymore. So I'm not against voting for this article, but I do, if you do go forward, it's not about trees are good or trees are bad. Trees are part of an overall ecosystem and we should just be mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone one?
Check, check. Dan Burchill, Wampus Avenue. Just a question. In the printed warrant, it says the Select Board and Finance Committee deferred on this. So have they recommended it after the printing?
Yes, yes. Sometimes that happens. They don't have enough time to meet before the press deadline.
Thank you.
Microphone two?
Michael Vialas, Willow Street. Like the last speaker, I'm not against this, but it is a complicated issue and things should be considered. As she stated, the effects on housing that we do need should be considered and other things like, are you saving the trees and preventing somebody from putting solar up? So it gets very complicated and I just want to encourage if this does pass that all those considerations be considered.
Thank you. Microphone three?
I'm all for this bill, mostly because if people are concerned about the paper bags and wanting to charge for them, maybe we should stop killing some trees. So whatever you tear down, put it back up. Because if you don't, if you're fearful of the hazard of the dying trees, the burning bush, plant some new ones. They're not going to die as quickly and then you won't have to charge us at the store.
Thank you. Seeing no others standing, we will vote. Non-binding resolution, land and tree clearing limits by law. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Going to try that one more time. Could all who are in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Could all who are opposed, please say nay?
Nay.
The motion clearly carries. Is there any difference in the gym?
I was four to one in favor.
Thank you. So I'd just like to remind folks too, that the gym has, before we went into COVID lockdown situation, there were some plans to change town meeting to make it more amenable for people to attend. And one way to do that was to have two spaces, one in the gym so that you could bring children, you could sprawl out more, spread, you know, there's, spread out more comfortably. If these seats don't work for you, maybe those ones do, that kind of thing. So also now because of COVID, people might want to spread out more, but that may continue to be an option in the future if people will actually use it. Article 55, Non-Binding Resolution Limiting Negative Impacts of Unaffordable Growth. Ms. Fredericks moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Fredericks, to your article.
So when I started this process of petitioning, it was out of frustration because of the unresponsiveness of the planning department, planning staff to requests by Green Acton, requests from groups of people to take action on the rehab trust and all these other things that we're working on behind the scenes where we get stonewalled and we're told that they're not going to put it on the agenda, on the planning board agenda. In fact, some of these times, they wouldn't even meet, saying that there was no reason to meet because there were no developer applications to process. So that frustration led me to create these petitions. That said, the process so far, I think, has been extremely successful. The work that is being done now, people talking and collaborating, and even the FinCom is in favor of these land use proposals and prioritizing water, even though other officials can't decide whether water is priority. But anyways, I'm going to move that we take note, that we table this.
You can move to take no action.
I can move to table this. No, I want to move to table it.
Okay.
Because I'm going to bring it up again. But I'm going to leave you with this slide here of the things that the planning board could be doing, but I believe isn't. And hopefully they will be more responsive as we move forward because I can tell you, I'm going to be getting my pen ready again to go get signatures for various articles that I'm going to bring forward. If we don't get the responsiveness that we need from our town officials, and that is why state law provides the right for citizens to alter government via the petition. So thank you very much and I hope you vote to table this. Thank you.
The motion to lay it on the table is not in order since the main motion is to pass it.
I can jump in here. The, a motion to lay on the table.
The motion to lay on the table, it's what's called a subsidiary motion. There needs to be a main motion made either to pass or take no action on the motion.
Which we did. We had the motion to pass. And it was seconded. And it was seconded.
Oh, then, then, yes. Then, so this would be a subsidiary motion, so this would be in order.
Okay, it is in order. So I think this just points to the fact of our endurance. We're all sticking here, but maybe we're just missing a couple of things. So the motion is to lay this item on the table. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. It does require a -- is that a two-thirds, or I should remember, I just did it.
Two-thirds.
That is a two-thirds, and it is non-debatable. So all in favor, all who are in favor of laying this on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion clearly carries by the two-thirds, even if everyone in the gym objected.
It's unanimous in here.
All right. Two more to go. Article 56, non-binding resolution, mobilizing Acton's climate action plan. Ms. Symes moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Symes, to your article.
I brought my wrong glasses down.
You're good.
That's what I get for not having progressives. All right. Want to make sure I have this little guy. Thank you, Madam Moderator. And thanks to all of you for hanging in there. I'm going to try to raise the energy level just a titch. Okay. I'm Deborah Symes. I'm here with my colleagues from the Acton Climate Coalition, Judith Ehrenstein and Karen Root Watkins. This article, in this article, we are asking you to advance the momentum you've helped to build for strong action to address our climate emergency. The article is a non-binding resolution that identifies the climate stakes, points to the considerable work ahead, celebrates Acton's progress, and asks town meeting members to rally behind implementation of Acton's coming climate action plan. We ask you to say yes to Article 56, to fortify Acton's climate action. Acton is clearly concerned about our warming planet. In 2020, town meeting passed nearly unanimously a declaration of the climate emergency. As we meet here today, the need for rapid and ambitious action could not be more urgent. In recognition of the emergency and the urgency, the town is developing a climate action plan due out in mid-June. Many Acton residents, town staff and boards, businesses, and civic groups contributed to it. The latest report from IPCC is clear in its conclusion. We must reduce fossil fuel emissions dramatically in the next eight years to avoid what UN Secretary General Antonio Guterres calls a fast track to climate disaster. Acton's 2030 net zero target responds to that timeframe. Greenhouse gas emissions come from multiple sources. Acton's 2018 greenhouse gas inventory found that our largest sources are transportation, roughly 50% of our total emissions, the heating of homes and other buildings, 26% of our emissions, without including those from fossil gas leaks, and nearly 30% of our emissions when you do include them, and electricity use at about 16%. The climate action plan features reduction strategies for all those sectors. The solutions for emissions reduction are available now. The biggest reductions happen through energy efficiency and conservation, electrifying everything we possibly can, and moving rapidly to a renewable sourced, to renewable sourced electricity, such as through the Acton Power Choice Green Program and rooftop solar. Shifting to modern cold climate heat pump technology for heating and cooling our buildings yields efficiency of 300 to 400%. Sustainably managing our soils to help them store more carbon and protecting increasing trees and other biomass are important additional strategies. Acton is already a climate leader. We have a reputation in the state. Our municipality, school district, and water district have modeled the future in multiple initiatives. Increased renewable electricity through Acton Power Choice, non-fossil fuel heating and cooling in the new North Acton Fire Station and the Boardwalk Campus School Building, the beginning conversion of municipal fleet vehicles to EVs and hybrids, and open space protection, among others. And of course, individual households have taken steps to reduce their own carbon footprints. Amplified progress at a town-wide scale rests on our ability to mobilize the climate action plan quickly and vigorously. Moving our town toward its goals will require effort, time, and resources. This article, however, emphasizes the importance of non-municipal funding via federal and state resources, foundations, other nonprofits, and public-private partnerships. The town will need to extend its work with partners, some of which are on that slide, in an ambitious effort to secure resources for some of the bigger tasks that lie ahead, such as retrofits that move buildings from fossil-fueled to electrical systems. Article 56 underscores the importance of equity in the transition to a low-carbon economy. Multiple programs and incentives exist in the energy and climate sector, and more are coming. The article asks the town to take an active role in informing Actonians about these opportunities and supporting people in taking action. In the two years since our climate emergency declaration, impacts have become more obvious and more serious. Locally, they will be, those will be increasing intensity of storms and rainfall, more extreme heat events, and potentially sea level rise on the Massachusetts coast measured in feet by centuries end. Only near-term and deep emissions reductions will allow us to avoid such impacts, but the window for action is extremely short. We ask that Acton do its part to achieve these reductions. Our community has an incredible opportunity to help turn around this climate crisis. In passing Article 56, you town meeting members can reiterate your call to all of Acton to join together in this unprecedented moment for humanity. We can make bold progress toward a thriving, low-carbon, and equitable economy that will yield myriad benefits for health, quality of life, and restored environment for generations to come. A better future, starting now. Please vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a con speaker. You can come forward. I'll recognize Mr. Beals for five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I suspect I'm going to raise the energy level by opposing this. I'm Tom Beals of Willow Street. Warrant Article 56 cites a recent Massachusetts law, the Next Generation Roadmap. I want to talk about specific points in that new law and in the warrant article. Those points are shown on the first slide. The law recommends using economic models with scientific input. The warrant article, in part, proposes to electrify public and private buildings in Acton. Electrify isn't defined, and since my guess is that the vast majority of Acton buildings either have or have access to electric utility power, we're, well, left in the dark as to what electrify means. The article cites the new law, but the article doesn't provide an economic model or give scientific evidence for its recommendations. So on the next slide. Okay, good. I'll show a simple economic model. A house and a generating plant are each connected to a gas supply, and the plant supplies electric power to the house. Notice that the efficiency of conversion of natural gas to electricity ranges, in this graphic from the National Academy of Sciences, from 42 to 60%. The article's presentation by the last speaker advocated shifting to electrically-powered systems for heating. Suppose we consider only energy use for heat in the home, for heating hot water or cooking, and we use the 50% conversion efficiency for natural gas to electric energy. On the next slide. This slide envisions two scenarios for energy use for heat in the home. For a given amount of heat produced by gas to the home, some volume of CO2, carbon dioxide, is produced. When that same amount of heat is produced from electric power at 50% generation efficiency, twice the amount of CO2 is produced, and the costs are 50% greater. So for heat in the home, natural gas may be the most efficient, least CO2-producing way to use natural gas. In this simple case, banning natural gas connections to homes would be counterproductive. Of course, this is a simple model. As you add relevant factors and data, you improve the model. Some of those improved factors that might be considered are shown here. ISO New England gives a near-real-time update of its fuel mix for electricity production. When I took the darker image in the upper right, natural gas was 55% of the mix, so the natural gas advantage over electricity would be lower. But as long as natural gas is part of the fuel mix, and this graphic from the Energy Information Administration suggests that gas to residences is going to be stable through 2050, we may be better off using the existing infrastructure and using natural gas in the home. In summary, and on the last slide, the warrant article asks that we approve a long list of actions without any consideration of the drawbacks or adverse consequences. The article asks that we go all in on electricity as a power source, as if electricity is now a renewable and reliable source. But like electricity, natural gas is not necessarily a fossil fuel, and is not necessarily fossil fuel dependent, and natural gas is a somewhat more reliable energy source than the electric power grid. If this point, gas best used where its heat is used, holds up to critical assessment, we may find a non-economic benefit of resilience by using chemical energy, including natural gas, as well as electrical energy as part of an energy grid. Let's commend this article back for improvement by voting no tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Select Board recommendation?
I had a somewhat long and redundant speech, but let me summarize it given the hour. The Select Board unanimously supports this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
I'm with Jim keeping it short. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Speaker at microphone three.
Well, I sounded at a pro microphone, but I don't feel like walking across to a negative one. Don't underestimate the importance of passing these non-binding resolutions late at night. They'll be cited as the sentiment of the town of Acton from now on, just like the so-called emergency declaration was done before. Remember one thing. All of this climate change is based on something called increasing temperature of the earth. There is no way to measure that kind of a number. To an accuracy of a few tenths of a degree Celsius, you couldn't tell the average temperature of the auditorium, which would change over the time that we've been sitting here. This whole thing has been a sales pitch. Electrifying everything sounds great until you, if it happens and you don't happen to have enough electricity, your Teslas will sit at home. You will be walking. Your house will be cold because there will be no heat. There are consequences to this which have not yet been realized, but it's most likely that the more we do this, the most affected, negatively affected people will be those who can least afford it. Maybe it's okay for people who have the funds to electrify everything, but people who can barely afford to go to Market Basket to buy their food are not going to be very successful paying the heating bills next winter. The reason gasoline is now $4, $5 a gallon is because we are not producing it. We have plenty of it. That's part of the inflation problem. This thing, these resolutions have consequences. To explain it all would take a lot more time than I have, but don't be fooled into voting for this. It's not going to help the people who can most, who need help the most, vote no, please.
Thank you. I see there is a--
Madam Moderator, we do have a speaker in the gym.
Yes, let's go to the gym.
My name is Fran Cummings, Martin Street. My daytime job is at Peregrine Energy Group, a consulting firm in Boston, where I've spent a lot of time looking at numbers on heat pumps and a lot of other technologies. I just need to correct the record. The speaker who showed some slides in opposition was ignoring a couple of really important things. One is that the grid is becoming greener, you know, with more solar, for instance, and more wind, so that it's going to become cleaner than it has been in the past, where his slide was indicating the efficiencies of natural gas power. Another key one is that heat pumps, I think everybody's probably beginning to hear about heat pumps. Their efficiency, as Deborah said in her initial presentation, can be up to 300 or 400%. So it's not like we're using power to run old-fashioned electric heating. We're talking about much higher efficiency. So this is definitely the right way to go, electrifying. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Brandy Osman. I just want, hearing some of those facts in the opposition, I just want people to think about the leaked gas and the high, amazingly much higher, I remember 84 times as much of a greenhouse gas that unburnt, leaked natural gas is. And so there are other, in addition to some of the things that Fran Cummings said, there are other things that weren't really mentioned in that analysis, and that the falling apart infrastructure and the costs that it would take to totally fix the gas infrastructure make me want to get away from it. And so I want to thank everybody who is working on the climate action plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone three.
Hi. Hi. Christopher Lopez, Central Street. So I'm definitely for this, and I-- Thank you. So I'm super supportive of this article. I find it seems like Acton as a whole is moving towards this article already. It seems a lot of the movements that we're taking to have a greener future is within this article. I think a question of mine, where it comes to a lot of the wording on electrification, is there any room in this article for, in the future, for there to be any other solar-- yeah, yeah. Is there any, besides electric, is there any room to go to anything else that would be more sustainable if it comes up in the future? That is a direct question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. It's helpful to remember that this article is doing a couple of things. It's saying, hooray, we have a climate action plan that's coming. It has very, it will have a bunch of strategies that have been, had cost-benefit analyses conducted on them, so that we can understand the best, most cost-effective, et cetera, you know, most bang-for-the-buck kinds of priorities to take. There's nothing in the article that-- There's nothing in the article that we're voting on tonight that says, you know, "We're only limited to this kind of technology, or this kind of technology." It's really saying—the point of all of this is to use technologies that we have, and who knows what may come—come down the pike—that are not carbon emitting, that do not emit greenhouse gases, and make the problem that we're—you know, the hole we're in worse.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Microphone one?
Good evening. Adam Smith, Main Street. There are things about this article that I'd like to hear clarified, but seeing the hour and the lack of con speakers at the microphones, I'd like to call the previous question.
There's motion on the floor to cut off—
Second.
All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Now, we will vote on the motion itself. Mobilizing Acton's Green Climate Emergency Plan requires a majority. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
In the gym?
Thank you.
In the gym?
Yeah, yeah, I'm coming, I'm coming. I think it was about four to three.
Okay.
Four in favor.
The motion clearly carries. So, before we get to the last article, I do just want to say again, thank you all for sticking with it, and it's perfectly understandable if you can't stick with it, as some people have had to make that move. Our final article for this meeting. Number 57, Non-Binding Resolution: Changing the State Flag and Seal. Ms. Hurley moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Ms. Hurley?
Thank you for having me. Thank you, everybody. I'm Lindsay Hurley, from Half Moon Hill. And is the slide up?
There we go.
There we are. So, I don't know how many of you have actually looked at our state seal and our state flag. There it hangs. Would somebody like to hold it up to show what the flag looks like? People are pretty tired at this point, maybe not. Anyway, you can see what it looks like, and I know that there's many people who have never really looked at it, but this represents us. This is a very important issue for us to address, because pictures matter, symbols matter. What do we see when we see this image? We see a white hand holding a colonial sword over the head of an indigenous man. The man carries one downward-pointed arrow. He wears no quiver, and he looks beaten and submissive. The sword looks powerful above him. This is the image our state holds up to the nation as the symbol that represents us. It's the image our children see on their auditorium stages in all the public schools. It's on every official letter of our state. As I said before, symbols and imagery matter. The message—they message what we believe to be true, what we want to perpetuate. Is this what we want representing us? I am not proud of this seal. I am appalled and embarrassed by it. And the state motto that goes around the indigenous man there translates to, "With a sword, she seeks peace, quiet peace under liberty." What does that mean? Really? What does it mean? It's like—it doesn't make any sense at all. So, that's our state motto and our state seal and state flag. The overwhelming interpretation of our Massachusetts state symbol flowing on this flag is a subjugation of Native Americans through violence. I do not want my children or my grandchildren to think this is okay, and I do not want any Native Americans, especially children, to think that this is how our Commonwealth and the people who live here think of them. I do not want people to internalize this as the image of themselves. Resolutions in support of changing the state flag and seal have been approved already throughout Massachusetts in 47 cities and towns, including Lincoln, Lunenburg, Bolton, Belmont, and just last night, Stockbridge. Now that Mississippi has finally retired their Confederate Stars and Bars as their state flag, you could say that Massachusetts is the last state still flying a flag of white supremacy in America. This is shameful, but it's true. So, now, after stalling this bill for 37 years in a row, our state legislature in 2020 finally approved legislation, and the governor has appointed a special commission to recommend changes to our flag and seal. Six indigenous leaders with state legislators, historians, the Secretary of State's representative, and others are on this commission. This all happened, of course, just before COVID, and it was stalled, and nothing has happened since. But this is no excuse anymore. They must move forward and continue this work. So, the flag and seals symbolize who we are and what we represent. Indigenous leaders are still continuing their call for the flag and seal to be changed, and they need our support. Symbols carry weight, they have meaning. It's time to change the Massachusetts flag and seal to create a new official state symbol that reflects the mutual respect and connection that we want between all people who share in our Commonwealth today. I hope that the Town of Acton will vote in favor of this article tonight and join the growing list of communities who are calling on the legislature to change the Massachusetts flag and seal. Thank you. Your vote matters tonight. Please support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Board recommendation?
Thank you. Recognizing that indigenous people have suffered from systemic discrimination, the appropriation of their symbols for flags, seals, and mascots, the robbing of their ancestral lands, and the encroachment of their cultural lifeway, and given that the special commission relative to the seal and motto of the Commonwealth created by a resolve of the General Court in 2020 and appointed by the governor will recommend changes to the current flag and seal of Massachusetts, the Select Board has voted unanimously to recommend this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
On January 11, 2021, Governor Baker signed the bill to redesign the problematic Massachusetts state flag and seal. Although the bill was signed more than a year ago, no change has been made. Article 57, which is being proposed at many town meetings across the state, is a non-binding resolution urging the state legislator to get on with it already. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Thank you. Seeing no one standing, we will vote. This does require a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
No, because I said no.
Thank you. The—the motion does carry. I believe we have one more motion.
Ms. Moderator, I moved that we dissolve town meeting.
There's motion to—and second to dissolve town meeting. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, you're on your own.